$1,500 bills, things like that. So I guess right now, we're gonna try to sort of play that by year, see how it goes. And one thing that we're certainly willing to do, and if anybody talks, you know, has questions for you, it would be payment plans. We absolutely will set those up. Right now, what we're looking at doing is we're looking at prorating those out over the rest of the year. We'd like to try and get all these arrears bills done before the end of January because it makes it easier for some of this payroll stuff. Yes, Kathy, go ahead.
Okay. We are required to send out a second notice for delinquent bills. If we're not putting penalties on and we're not disconnecting people, are you going to require for that second notice to go out?
I would, I would say it probably should because people have so much on their mind, they may just forget to pay the bill.
Plus, if they got it, then they can't come back later and say, well, we never knew.
Okay.
Could there be something in that second notice that kind of outlines what we're doing? That hey, if you're behind your bill and you can't even, obviously, if you could pay it, you just forgot, please pay.
Well, yeah, absolutely. One of the things I'll highlight is we typically would have bailed today, but because we're having this meeting tonight, we want to make sure that the things we're doing were, you know, in accordance with the council. So we'll actually be billing tomorrow. So we'll have a notice in that bill as well. But then the second notice, we'll also remind them again. So that's, yeah.
Just a matter of what programs are available.
And put it on the front page of our website. Put it in.
I think it is. I think it is on the front page of our server right now, but we'll make sure that language is updated.
And I could also put a bill, I have minimal space to write on the bills. And I can also put a note or some kind of notice on the bills as well.
Yeah, okay. Well, all right. Very good. Number three, moving on to that suspension of all non-
I was gonna go back on before.
What's that?
You were saying you were gonna go out like 60 days. And then, well, you know, for that-
Yeah.
One of the other things you could do too is, you know, if you're worried about getting too high, you can make sure you notify the ones that are normally always late, you know, that work with them and the ones that are new at this. Just make sure, you know, just try to get them back up and speed like normal, you know.
Because you're always gonna have your-
Right. We know, I mean, we have certain of those kind of high flyer types that sometimes are in arrears. We know that. But, yeah, I think overall, I mean, we'll try and get as many notices as we can out. And, you know, our goal is not to set people off. Our goal is to try and make sure that people don't fall so far behind that they're unable to pay the bill.
Exactly.
Because we know that that's problematic. And we have a small window really to deal with. The two for us, because come, what is it, October, you know, they start having the, a lot of the no shut-off rules again.
Right.
So we'd rather get people caught up over the summer instead of just creating a real hole. So, no, that's very good. Number three there, suspension of all non-essential boards and commissions. To me, this seems like a common sense measure as much as we can. I know we're dealing with one of the largest issues we had from the planning commission tonight. You know, this is a big potential new addition to the community. But after that, I know planning commission is gonna have limited, we should be okay for a little while. We may have to have something to do with one of our condition use permits as well. But that's something we could maybe punt towards the end of the month, if April hopefully, if possible. Same thing for Park and Rec and all the other, other ones, I think, right now. The EDA is working on a program, a short-term loan interruption program. And I'm not sure exactly how we'll, we'll implement that. You know, I think we have the ability to do so. One of those items would be something that we'll be asking for tonight, which would be a, a transfer from the electric fund early, was something I was gonna be looking at this fall as a part of our budget. But we have some additional money that's been rebated to us this year. So some of that money, we maybe looked at topping off the loan revolving loan fund. And so instead of doing that at the end of the year, we might be asking the council, we'll be asking the council to do that a little earlier tonight. So that'd be what we'll be able to fund our program at that time. So, any questions on any of that? Okay. City Hall close to limit exposure. I mean, I tried to get everyone, you know, contact with you all before we did that. Currently, what we're looking at doing, this is gonna change with the governor's proclamation of theirs, his declaration of day. We're looking at probably having one person in city hall each day, just to maintain checking mail. You know, for example, one of the days, Lynn will be doing payroll, make sure that gets done properly. Nancy's got some things she needs to do. But that way, we'll be limiting the number of employees. And, I mean, technically, the only essential employees, my reading at least, would be our, our utilities. So, I mean, it's electric, sewer and water. And so, you know, we'll have a little bit more feedback from the department heads tomorrow after I have a meeting with them. But we're looking at alternating those personnel so they're not all together all at once. So we might have two on Monday in sewer and water, and then the other two would, and that department would be there on Tuesday and kind of throughout at least a two-week period. And I don't know exactly how that all will go, but that's kind of what we're looking at. Same thing for electric, is we would alternate those. They still would be on call. So if there is some kind of a crisis, hopefully, we don't get too much more rain here the next couple of days. But obviously, we deal with the realities, and I'm not gonna ask for problems. But, so, city hall, for the most part, will, will be closed then. As I said, from, you know, I'll probably be in there an hour or two a day, just to make sure that if it's going well, checking emails, checking out, making sure that if something needs to get out, the council will be doing that. But otherwise, we're trying to follow the governor's guidance on what he's told us is non-essential. So, and I, you know, I appreciate feedback on that, if you've got things. I don't know, if you have something, Krista, you kind of gotta look on your face there a little bit.
No, but finances is essential.
Yeah, finance, well, and I mean, so-
You have to have the payroll process.
Nancy, I think we've got you for the five days or six days out of that period. So, yeah, I think we're gonna be doing the best we can to make sure all that stuff is, is done properly. I'm making sure that's right. Council meetings, this is something that, you know, after today's announcement from the governor, originally, we were looking at maybe doing a sort of a telephonic meeting, the first meeting in April, because of the, you know, we won't be able to prep a packet because for the most part, we're gonna be closed. Where, I think Linda's got a resolution there, and she got that for everyone here, where we're looking at potentially canceling that first meeting in the month. And then we would end up having the, the second meeting of the month would still be held. Part of the resolutions you've got for the emergency ordinance here would, would allow a certain level of authority to staff to handle some of these things, making sure the bills get paid and that sort of thing in the interim period. So, I mean, I'm certainly open to feedback on that. You know, if, if you'd like, we could still potentially have it telephonically or have it remotely. I don't know what your feelings are. It would be difficult for us to provide a thorough packet for you, but, I mean, it's certainly something we could do if we needed to.
Are there any statutory decisions that we have to make at that time that, that can't wait till the second meeting?
Um, not, not to my knowledge.
As far as responding to conditional use permits or legal issues that we have to respond to by a certain date or-
The, the liquor conditional use permit will need to be decided upon by the second meeting.
That's right.
We have to do that at the second. But the planning commission, I believe, still needs to do some consideration on that.
Yeah, and I think we may end up, that meeting may be moved towards the end of the month too. I mean, our hope is that after 10 days, we can have a planning commission meeting a lot like this, where, you know, it's sort of spread out and it's a little bit easier to do that. Because we, we did get a report back on that, and I know Lonnie and Duane have taken a look at the battery. And the planning commission's, the whole will be still reviewing that. Because we do have, I think by the 26th of April, we have to have a decision on that. So, but other than that, I mean, right now, we're pretty well caught up. So, I mean, I think, you know, it certainly is up to the council. You know, you guys are the boss and you, you make the rules, but-
What about the bills after the bill?
The bill, that's what I was just- Yeah, so part of that, part of that resolution that I think we should have, or if I was emailed out to you, it, it sort of devolves power style of staff to make those payments ahead of time. You still will be reviewing them as part of the packet. It just may mean that they'll be prepaid instead of, you know, as paid. I believe that's correct, isn't it?
That's right. And sometimes we have to make bill payments anyways. Sometimes you're already approving things that kind of been paid, but, but yeah, there's things that we'll have to keep making payments on.
Sure. I don't think we have a tremendous, you know, the bonds, for the most part, we're paid in February, the first set of transit bonds, right? So, other than that-
The new one?
No.
We made a lot of debt service-
You made the, you did the debt service, yeah, you made the debt service. So I think all the big debt service payments until probably August would be paid.
Yep.
So, should be, should be okay on that. And then if you've got feedback at any time, you know, say, hey, Tim, this issue came up and we just, we need to have a meeting or a special meeting, you know, emergency meeting, we give notice and we can call it that day. A special meeting, we would want to still give our proper notice public. But, you know, the mayor has authority to do that as well, so. Number six, you can scratch that one because of the changes that were, the governor brought out today. Public work staffing, I talked a little bit about that. I think, and working with Charlie, you know, he's, he's got some projects that some folks can work on too, that can be done independently. Liquor licensing, this is a question of whether we want to prorate these, trying to find a, a measure to help some of these businesses that have liquor licenses. It's not a ton, but there are a couple of them in town here where we would maybe prorate the licenses, the amount that they're closed. I don't know if that's something we want to consider. I guess it kind of makes sense to me. It's not probably a lot of money, but I think for those folks that are able to serve right now, it'd be held as a lot of money. Well, right, it's, it's two, probably two months of lost revenue for them. So, any thoughts on that?
What's the annual license?
I thought it was about 500-ish.
Or is it part of the whole year's license?
Well, we could-
If it's prorated, it'd be 60 bucks.
Yeah, and we could certainly take a look at the impact that would have. I'm not sure exactly-
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be much for licenses. Although, I'll remind you that they all just went through their renewal in April first. So, it, you know, it would depend on if you did some of their last year as well as some of their year to come, which is just fine. The fees didn't change, so it's the same ratio.
Because those are some of the hardest hit.
Right. You know, those service businesses, absolutely, I mean, you know, they're very restricted. So, and I guess we don't absolutely need to have a decision on that tonight.
Right.
But it's something I just wanted to put in your mind, just, you know, it seems like it would be something that if, if we can do it financially, it would be a big help to those businesses.
Because, yeah, they're closed until at least May.
Right. So as I said, two, they're basically gonna have two full months, pretty much already, of, of lost revenue and, and so, March, April, end of-
If they haven't paid, then we just pay the prorate, have them pay the prorated for the upcoming year.
Okay.
But if they have paid, not refund, but credit at the next year's cycle.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just currently-
So is it talked out of next year's maybe?
This, this coming year, but it's just a matter of what months you go on or pay back.
I mean, that makes some sense too, because, you know, that would be beneficial to them long-term.
Right. Because then there's not this exchange of-
Right, sending a check back to them.
Money and everything. And we just credit that to next year.
Well, like I said, I don't need a decision on that. Just, you know, we can bring it up at the, another meeting here and just be thinking about it. So, I mean, you know, whatever the council decides to do, I just wanted to make it a possibility for you. The number nine, one on permitting, you know, that's probably kind of be scratched to, to a certain extent too. That's what we have been doing up until now, is we've been just taking those applications through the, the Dropbox and through our, our drop-off here at the front of city hall. And we'll continue to take those. However, we, we, you know, CMF isn't processing anything right now. So, you know, they're, they're probably gonna sit for two weeks. I mean, which hopefully, in most cases, not, not an emergency. Then a moratorium on other permits. We're not issuing any of the healthers permits or anything like that, in accordance with those guidelines from the CDC and the Department of Health. This is just a small PowerPoint I had in here, and just some items. You can kind of see, like I said, what, what we have been doing, our preparation and then our response. You know, we're, we're sort of sliding into the full response component of this pack now. And these things are all fluid. They've been changing every day, pretty much as, you know, different things have happened. But I wanted you at least to see what we run from. So, you know, you've got page five and six there, you know, establishing what is a critical, what we consider critical, and then our responses. So, we, we're, like I said, we're kind of in phase three now, which is, it's kind of a lockdown sort of thing, aside from those critical, critical services. So, a lot of that's just for informational purposes for you guys to take a look at. And then going into a couple of the other plans that, that, some of that's been implemented, some of it hasn't. One thing that I'm working through this with staff, we've identified some, some gaps in our own, you know, planning, you know, pandemic, emergency planning. Some of these items were, were not in, in place. So, I mean, this is actually, in a, in a way, it's kind of a positive for us because it gives us a, I think I was saying before, kind of a baseline. You know, now we'll know a little bit more of what to do next time if there's an issue like this. So, this is just kind of detailing what some of those items are, and then what we'll be, what we'll be doing. The only city service that, based on what this, this, what the state has sent us out, this is the list, I think everybody got a copy of it, you can see what's open and what's closed. The only one that right now is gonna be open is liquor store. So, that's maybe a little bit fascinating. But they've got it on there and it's pretty clear that's on the open list. So, we may be looking at helping Kathy staff there if she has a demand for that. But right now, other than that, that's a, it's a little fascinating to me. But we're definitely in the, we're getting, a lot of Germans are out here. So, you know, that's, that's not unusual there. This next one on page 13, going to page 14, is a temporary work at home policy, which right now, I don't think we'll be implementing because we don't necessarily have the ability to do so. We have a lot of things that need to be secured before we can work at home, to work on the shared drive and things like that. And, and that isn't necessarily gonna be possible. So, that's something that we'd definitely be taking a look at in the future, you know, because I think that it would be beneficial to have that so that, you know, we, we would have some service. And I know some of the councilors, that was some of the responses I got too, would be that it'd be nice to have a secure login for, for folks. So, definitely something that we'll be, that we'll be trying to handle in the next couple of years. So, I think for the most part, and then we have additional leave, which once again, a lot of this has been superseded by, by what the, the governor's issued today. You know, so that, that, what I, what I passed around is basically what we're gonna be implementing. And the question is the fundability for that. Right now, we don't have any kind of guaranteed recompensation there from the state. So, non-essential employees are gonna be, you know, gifted up, up to 80 hours of paid leave, which isn't gonna, and that's what the state's telling us. They're saying this is what it's gonna be. And, you know, businesses, when they do that, they have, are gonna have a means to, you know, submit reimbursement. Right now, states and cities and, you know, we're not covered. So, I, I don't know exactly how that's gonna work. Hopefully, they'll add. I don't, can't believe they wouldn't add the cities in or the counties in. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But, you know, so, you know, I'm going by what the state's telling us and trying to, you know, be conscious of that, you know, as well. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. Other than that, I guess, I think those are the, the items I had in the board session. The, the rest of the time we have, I'd like to, to get your feedback on things. And then, if there's things that you want us to be doing and we're not doing, or you can think of that would be helpful for us to do going forward, you know, I'd certainly like to get that feedback from you as well.
Okay. Something I want to say. As far as not holding city council meetings or planning and zoning meetings, the biggest problem the state has got is getting people to follow through with this order.
Sure.
And if we lead by example, and if we can possibly not hold meetings, it's a plus for us. Just my two cents.
Thanks, Lonnie. Yeah, I mean, I guess, does anybody, I mean, maybe that's to go back to at that point. I mean, does, does anybody have any questions on that? You know, as I said before, if, if an emergency meeting, if something else would come up in emergency criteria, obviously, the mayor can call a meeting, you know, when he feels it's necessary. So, I, you know, I'm, and I'm, you know, I'll be here. So, you know, it's really up to the council what they, they would want to see done there.
You can do video meetings too. I don't know, according to your statement earlier.
Yeah, I mean, we do have some possibilities of logging in electronically. Also, like I said, a telephonic meeting. The way that would work is that, you know, one of the members of the council or myself needs to be here, basically having, you know, and I don't know why this is, but, you know, it would be a call-in where we, we would have a chat, like a, a telephone conference.
Telephone conference.
Through KM Telecom. Everyone can call in, and one person has to be at city hall. I don't know why that's the rule, but it is. And then everybody else would call in there. And the way that would work is that all of the motions and things like that would have to be done by roll call, so that it's all documented. I mean, we would still record here, you know, we would be able to do what we're doing here with, with Lonnie today. So, I mean, that certainly is a possibility as well, if that's what the, the council would like to have. The issue with that first meeting in April is more of getting a packet together from a staff level than anything else. It's not that we can't do it. And, you know, I, I'm not sure what we would necessarily have on the agenda, you know, because I, I do plan on keeping the, the level of business down to a minimum, for at least for the interim, because it just makes sense to me. Because obviously, our public is not gonna necessarily want to participate as much as they normally would either. However, with that telephonic option, we do for a small charge, we have unlimited. So, we can make that phone number available to the public as well. They can also call, listen in and actually interact as the mayor or the council would desire them to. So, I mean, to me, that in the short term, long-term, we'd like to have some better technology solutions even than that. But in the short term, we certainly can have those meetings if the council would desire to do so.
I, I think if we don't have anything critical for the first meeting, we cancel what the resolution-
Yeah.
-during the meeting, we can discuss it again, but, and then shoot for the-
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second. And if, if we deem it necessary, the conference call agreed, if not, this would be fine.
Yeah. The issue of unlimited teleconference where the public can join in, it'd just be a disaster.
Yeah.
I agree.
So.
Especially if everyone is on speakerphone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not encouraging. I'm just saying, it is a possibility if we wanted to do that.
Yeah, if we were to do it as a council and have them have the ability to send in emails or-
Well, and that, that is another possibility. I know Linda, Linda's been following that pretty closely.
And respond to questions in that manner.
Sure.
I'd be okay with that, but that's dumb. I, I don't, even what we've got here just doesn't meet what we should have.
Oh, sure. No, I, I, and I understand. I just, you know, so, I mean, the guidance that we've gotten is yes, you know, if people submit those questions ahead of time, that would be how we would, would probably deal with it best.
Yeah.
You know, and then you would go through those questions and you would say, okay, you know, and everybody would have their chance to, you know, the mayor would say, okay, you know, comments from every person. And it would just, it would probably be a little bit more awkward, but it certainly is due. And some cities have done that this week, I think.
They've used Zoom. I know a couple of cities that used Zoom to do it. And it seemed to have worked out fine. But everything was still then recorded and was still put up. And people can watch because you only really have the public forum piece of the meeting where anybody's going to be able to talk. So, it's still very limited anyway.
Public hearings are a bit more challenging.
Public hearings would be if you had to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as we don't have any right now, we're fine.
Okay. All right. Well, what I'll do then is we'll, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we'll, we'll forward that to the regular council pack for consideration. So, anything else? Like I said, it, it mean, what else can we do to, to, I mean, we try, I try to provide as much information as I can. You know, I, I tell myself, fortunate, we have an experienced staff here. And the feedback I've got from department heads and from Nancy and Linda and Charlie has been really helpful. You know, when I type something up, they catch the, they catch mistakes, which is great. So, I appreciate the feedback from them and the corrections they've had for, for some of those items. Is there anything else you guys can think of that you would, you know? A couple of things coming out of this. You know, in consultation with Nancy, we have advised the department heads to limit expenditures. We're kind of going on, I guess you wanna call it the wartime footing, which is air bones, because we don't know what LGA is gonna look like this year. We really don't know what property taxes are gonna look like. You know, they already moved income tax back to the I-15. You know, I could see something like moving the property taxes back to I-15 too, which means that our, our cash flows could be pretty chunky. Part of that is the consideration of deferring other projects. You know, we approved the CCTV, that's $200,000. You know, if we can deflate that to the end of that contract, you know, it makes sense. Same thing with the, the laterals inspection program. You know, that's a, a program that we all know is necessary, but it's something that, you know, if it's deferred for three months, six months, it, it, it might be something where we would be able to preserve our cash on hand to kind of smooth out some of these, these chunks we're gonna have this year. So, I know we've already advised the department heads about that, and they've been very good about it. We may end up deferring some of the purchases this year on some items. It might be a good year to take advantage of, of debt. You know, if we, if we end up taking, instead of spending the cash we have on hand, if we, interest rates are great, you know, it might be a good year to take a look at lumping some of those things together and, and bonding for them. That's something we can deal with at a later date. But, but, you know, that's kind of what we're doing here to try and put the city on a, a good footing so that we don't have to, have too many issues with cash flow.
How we doing with wastewater flow? Are we getting any plugs? Because people are flushing stuff they're not supposed to flush. Doing pretty good?
Yeah. We have tried to advise people of that via the, the Facebook and also the website. We know that's-
I know a lot of people have been sharing that, reminding people and just saying, please.
Radio stations have also been doing a good job of reminding people, like all the different radio stations, don't flush with an APP or waste.
Well, it's every city that's, you know, it's Rochester, I mean, all these small towns too. So, no, I, I mean, that's been really helpful as well, so.
Well, I thank you and the staff for all the efforts. I see the utility coverage, kind of a high-bred weekend coverage, you know, moving forward during this period. So, you know, by far, Charlie and his crew are the expert at how we can handle that. So, you know, I defer, you know, the recommendations to, from him and to him.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that. I think, actually, I think we're doing pretty well. I mean, considering everything that's happened, you know, I think, you know, and, and, you know, you're very aware of what the library's been doing. You know, they're, they're gonna be shutting down. You know, they're not gonna be essential. But this week, they've done a great job of getting the materials out. And I think people in the public have really appreciated that. I mean, for us, it's a great service. One thing that I know I've talked with Lonnie about is the pool. That's a real issue because anyhow long this lasts and how it goes, there's a very good chance we will be opening the first week of June or the last week of May. And it could even be much later than that. And it could be, I don't even wanna say it. But you know where it could go, if, you know, if, I mean, right now, we're, best case scenario, if the kids can go back to school on May 4th, with, based on what the governor put out today, yeah. I know it's probably not likely, but if they put another month in, they can maybe still get off in June, and we can maybe have a reasonably normal operation. But if they're at school in Ju- June or July, I think that that's gonna be something we have to take a real hard look at. And then there's, there's issues with that. But I'd like to borrow, well, so-
Right now, where the school's going, they're not extending schools. They're doing online. This last day, day can, we'll see.
Yeah.
You know, and they're, they're gonna try to go online, but that all comes down to technology. If kids got the internet, they got computers. Not everybody has that luxury.
No, but the school has, they did a technology survey, and I was very pleased and surprised to see when I went in one day for a meeting, either the end of last week or the beginning of this week, there were pallets of new Chromebooks at the high school that kids could check out.
On screen.
And with Kantel and other service providers offering free internet to anybody that's got a student in the house who wouldn't otherwise have it.
But you gotta remember, there's people that live out in the country that even with the free internet, it doesn't get out there. It doesn't work. It doesn't stream enough for them to work. So.
I'm more concerned, to be honest, with the group aspect of it. I mean, if they're telling us you can only have 10 people in the group, that's very difficult for us to implement, you know, at the aquatic center. So, like I said, I'm not gonna borrow any problems. Until it becomes a problem, not gonna worry about it. But it's something that's in the back of my mind, just playing it out. Quickly, you got anything, Charlie?
Nope.
Kathy, we got your questions answered for the most part?
Mm-hmm.
You got anything? Good. Nancy, you got anything? Okay, perfect.
I'm ready.
Nope? All right, good. Other than that, I think that's all I had. So, it's certainly up to you guys if you have other feedback. Anytime you've got any questions, please let me know. Because I would much rather get the questions right now, right away, so I can deal with it and not have a, have a problem later on. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I guess, uh, different notes between meetings here. Have you heard anything, an update from D as far as the small business loans that they're offering?
Sure.
Are they gonna expand that to more eligible employee or businesses? Because most of them on there are service, leisure bar, restaurant.
Yeah, so that's the program they rolled out, like over the last two days. And I, after what the governor said today, I haven't seen any additional updates to that.
I haven't seen any of those either.
Something that Dan mentioned earlier is definitely a salient point, like, you know, anybody who's a manufacturer is deemed essential. So, I don't know that these loan, even though they're gonna probably suffer, I don't know how these loan programs are going to, well, I don't know they're gonna cover. Probably not.
As of right now, no.
As of right now, right.
Yeah, we've had two who've contacted them already and they're not.
Oh, sure. So, that's what I mean. So, I mean, in, in terms of actually how many larger businesses that do work like that are like Mayo, I mean, they're probably not gonna be covered. It's gonna be, I would guess, stay on the service and retail side very hard. And even some of those, like, for example, like, Pete, you know, Domino's isn't gonna be affected. That's an essential, I mean, they're not close. So, I mean, that's an interesting kind of thing too. But as soon as I get any updates, I'll definitely share those with the board as well. So, thank you very much. I don't, I like work sessions I don't, I like work sessions because it gives us a chance to talk a little bit and it's, I'd like to encourage that as we go forward this year, maybe doing some of these half hour ones before the meeting. If that works for people, just because I think that it's beneficial for us to just touch base on a regular basis.
As far as the liquor store, Tim and I were talking earlier, since they are open, it may be a good idea just to limit any access to it as much as we can. And if we can do that through a drive up service or a call in service or something like that where they drive up, place an order. Somebody, you know, gives them their credit cards, they run in, pick up. But to that, not to stop you, but the liquor store won't take cash, they don't want to touch your credit card, they want you to put it in the machine, so.
Well, I mean, one thing we've looked at is, I mean, obviously getting them proper PPE, you know, and they're already using rubber gloves. So I mean, I think using rubber gloves, that definitely helps. Also wiping things down on, you know, very, I mean, after every customer wiping it down, which, you know, Kathy is, and I've, I've asked her numerous times, I said, are you comfortable? You know, are you still comf-, she is ecstatic right now on her sales, so she's like riding the wave as long as she can.
The thing with people with protective gloves though, is you put them on, as soon as you touch something, you have to throw them away and put another pair out for a time. Well, a lot of people don't, they put them on, they forget that it's the same as using your hands.
Sure, I mean, yeah, we do have that, I mean, I have a department head meeting tomorrow and that's definitely a question I'm going to be asking her, is if she has any strategies to combat that and how we continue to mitigate those issues, so absolutely.
I just throw that out because like at our work, we've bought extra gloves if people put them on, but then they wear them for an extended period of time and then I said, that's no different than using your hands, but no.
Very good point.
I, I did ask Kathy in passing about, you know, would you, would you do curbside and she mentioned, and I don't know if she mentioned this to you, that it would, she would need another employee present?
Yeah, we have talked, we have talked about that.
Love extra staff.
We have talked about that quite a bit and so it is, like I said, tomorrow we'll have that meeting with her and we'll see if there's anything we can figure out. No, I appreciate that, so.
Okay, so work session's done, so we're going to go ahead and call the.
Quick, quick, just to comment on your D question. I talked to Nick that runs that program.
Nicholas, up there?
He said he's, they're updating it either today or tomorrow.
Okay, I got an email from him saying they're updated, but I just hadn't seen the update on it, I don't think it's updated.
Yeah, he said they were still working on some minor details and was hopefully going to be updating that either tonight or tomorrow morning.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we'll call the regular meeting to order.
Thank you.
Kathy, have a good night.
Thank you.
And we'll start with the pledge. Thanks for coming out. And Lonnie, can you still hear us okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions?
So there should be two apps, so you've got the, this resolution here, which is a short one, which is basically just talking about that meeting in April, the first meeting in April. And then the other one would be our emergency declaration, which then would allow us to implement some of those other things that we talked about. So if you'd like to put those, you could put those under a new business or if you feel like they're, you know, acceptable, then we could put those under consent agenda.
I'll just have them under the business.
Okay.
So we'll have number four, first meeting in April, and then number five, emergency declaration. Dwayne, anything?
Nothing. I have nothing.
Okay. Entertainer motion to approve with the additions?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do you have a second?
Second.
Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda, number two, any questions for the administrator on that? Entertainer motion to approve this consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. No visitors, so that's an agenda. Visitors to council, mayor's report, obviously there's not, I mean, there's a lot to report, but everybody's heard it, right? Everybody knows what's going on. So I think the biggest message is to everybody is that everybody just needs to do their part. Whatever that means for you and your individual situation, position, if you're one of the so-called businesses that have to close or employees that doing your part is doing your part. I just want to remind people today, I have a really nice vantage point from where I, our office is at, which is closed to the public, but as I go to the post office and that, I can see the activity at Erdman's. And the rumor came out that there was going to be this shelter in place coming out at 2:00 at Erdman's, looked like the day before Thanksgiving at 12:30 or 1:00, could just anticipate that. Grocery stores are going to be open and people just shop normally, you know, go to the store once a week like you normally do, it's okay, they've got it. And then just to shout out to, to the businesses that have been open, a thank you to them, especially with small towns, because Erdman's has done a fantastic job, along with a lot of other businesses there, so we really appreciate them being there. And Charlie, all the guys out there still doing what they have to do. And Joel, EMS and that, going in and doing what they have to do and hopefully everybody stays safe doing that. Because the city really relies on you to do that and it's amazing how they watch what everybody does throughout the year and that you don't really do anything, but now all of a sudden they are depending on you and counting on you to be there. I think there's a lot more appreciation of that, so hopefully we have a big reset here to where people appreciate what you do for them every day as much as some of us do. So appreciate that to all the city employees for sticking in and doing that. And then just ask the city of Casson citizens to lead by example. If you don't have to be out in big groups, don't be. It's inconvenient, you know, but it's our generation's turn to step up and do what some generations before us have done. Step up and you do what it takes. So I just urge all the people in Casson to do that. And if you see somebody, we don't need to yell at anybody because they were standing three feet from somebody instead of six. You know, we've seen a few little sit, I got called there, they asked what we're going to do when we see people too close. And I said, well, we just remind people that we'd like to keep a little distance. So we can be nice about it and just remind people, I really don't believe it's the end of the world. It's just different, the world is different than it was four weeks ago. So if you think about it, the last 30 days has been about the la, the longest three years of my life. The things that have changed, the perspectives that have changed. We'll come out of it better, but it's going to be difficult and take a lot of patience because it's going to be very inconvenient to our way of life, especially as Americans that nobody can tell us what to do. We can go where we want, when we want, I can go do what I want, where I want. Well, for the best interest of everyone around you and not just you, we can't or shouldn't. So that's just my two cents as mayor and just ask everybody to get along and cooperate with what forces the mayor asked us to do. So on to public forum, I don't have any cards, anybody else have anything?
I just, I wanted to say one thing for people that came in after this, I said at 5:30, the cough that I have is allergies, it was nothing more than that. Your comment about lead by example, I just wanted to reassure everyone, I'm not out in public with a cough, it's allergy.
Thank you.
I don't know if we, if you were to mind, Mayor, actually, if we just had Pat during this time period too, that way I know this may take a little while with the, with our plat review tonight. So I know, Pat, why don't we just go ahead and do your, your item right now? I know Pat's here, she's doing a great job, she's going to update us on the hire over there, so. Go ahead and come up here, just state your name for the referee, Pat.
Hi, I'm Pat Jupergachak and Director of Casson Public Library. We are very excited about the possibility of hiring a new staff person. This person would be a library aide and the friendly face you see when you walk in to the library at the front desk. We have interviewed five candidates and come up with one excellent person that we hope to hire with granting your approval this evening. I've talked to her references and they were stunning, glowing, I think she would fit in very well with the team. We've been short staffed for five months and we vitally need this person in place and well-trained by the start of our summer reading program. Assuming, of course, that it happens on time and that's sure is our plan, we're going full steam ahead. So do I present the person?
Well, so what I'll, what I'll say is that, you know, Pat and I did have a conversation about delaying start dates. Because we did feel like it was, we want them obviously to be on the ground in time for a presumed library program this summer. We also felt like it made sense during this period, obviously, after today, I mean, with the library pretty much being shut down, it's not feasible to have somebody start. So we have, right now at least, deferred that start date to the 27th. And that may, may slide a little bit again if things don't improve, obviously, we hope they do, but, no, I think they had a good process. We worked very closely with the library board this time around, which I'm really pleased with, I hope to continue that. And we've got letters going out to help them with that today, so. Noah, if you want to go ahead and detail it, Pat, you go right ahead, and I don't know, Mel, if you guys think you want to chip in on it too?
I don't.
Okay.
Joy, at this point?
Yeah, you could, you could turn that people.
Thank you, her name is Barbara Johnson and she comes with a lot of wonderful life experience, not library experience, it's an entry level position. Rather than hiring librarians as we've had in the past, we chose to start someone in the entry level position. And she's very excited and would work very well for our library and for the residents of Casson.
So I guess what we're looking at is it'll be a pay grade two and it'll be step one. So as, as Pat mentioned, it's an entry level position, but we have a lot of enthusiasm, you know, it sounds like a very enthusiastic person and I think will fit our needs well. But we will continue to coordinate at the staff level if, you know, addition deferments required.
What would, what would the dollar amount be?
1545.
Yeah.
It's just easier when you put it, the dollar amount on a grade and stuff.
Sure, well, absolutely, no problem.
That'll be on the agenda to approve that hire at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think, you know, if you want, I mean, the, the position being offered was already approved by the council.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything.
So, you know, I mean, I guess if you wanted to make a motion, you know, approving the hire officially, that'd be fine. Otherwise, you know, it's certainly up to you, you know, I, I think that we had kind of approved the hiring of a new position already, so.
Not necessary, we don't.
Okay, Roger that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, so planning commission, we've got the number one there, Blaine's 14th preliminary plat.
Number one, don't worry, I got you hooked up, okay? And this is an item the planning commission reviewed at a couple of meetings earlier this winter. You've got quite a few documents in there. We've sat down, I know Brandon will be chiming in here too, I'm sure. Laura was not able to make it tonight, she, her company's got some movement restrictions and things like that, so I mean, I certainly understand. I think at a staff level, we have a pretty good understanding of this. You could see some of the maps that are already in there and Les has got that map up there as well. What we're looking at tonight is a preliminary approval for a plat, for a subdivision kind of on the east side of Casson. It would be Blaine's 14th, kind of butts up to the, the development's already built out there and, you know, I, I think Les give us what he's got and then however you want to proceed, we can do that. I know, like I said, Brandon and I can certainly answer questions and do a reading too.
My name's Les Conway and I'm with WSC Massey Engineering and Surveying here in Casson. And we're here for the preliminary plat approval at the city council. And reading through the staff documents that came up, there were two alternate resolutions that were provided by HGKI. And what I wanted to do was, there was quite a, quite a bit of narrative regarding combining outlots, not combining outlots and doing some things. And what I wanted to present tonight is that we're looking at an alternate C because we believe there's some pretty, pretty good rationale for the, for the preliminary plat that was put in your packet that we submitted last week. And we would like the preliminary plat, at least, there's two parts to this, but this just has to do with explaining the outlots and why they're broken up the way they are and why we would like to see it approved as we submitted it, the revision in your packet. So it was recommended that some outlots be combined and that other outlots, you know, be redesignated. But what we show on here, and I drew out the colors because it's a little easier to follow than it is to actually see where surveyors put their lines on drawings, is that first of all, we have an outlot B, which is associated with the, the storm pond that would be reconstructed to handle basically, it's pretty close to 60, 70 acres that go all the way up into Blaine's 7th, believe it or not. That's how far the water actually comes down there. And the reason we wanted this outlot to remain as its own outlot is as we've had in discussions with staff, is that if this plat moves forward and construction moves forward, it might be three or four years before we actually are told by the city that we need to survey that pond, dredge out anything, get it back to compliance or get it back down to depths in the pond and then turn it over to the city. So it could be three or four years before we actually do that. Well, in this particular case, if it is, let's just say it is three years or four years down the road, we would like it to remain as its own outlot. So all we have to do is basically when we justify to the city that it is in compliance and that it's ready to get turned over, a simple quit claim would actually allow us simply to deed that over to the city as its own outlot with any further meets and bounds or anything else. So we would like to keep outlot B, which is the storm pond and the drainage area around it, as its own outlot. The blue area indicated here is dedicated right of way. So all of the roads in there that we've shown on there would all be dedicated at the time of final plat, it would all be right of way and it would come, come to the city at the time of this final plat, whenever we file, whenever it gets filed. In that particular case, for other instances on here, if there are options in the relatively near future for you to get, for instance, let's say a legacy grant or a DNR or a MINDOT grant for something associated with the parkway or the bridge, you would already have to have ownership of that property anyways, and so if we platted all at the same time, then that is already city right of way and there's no further work required. Some of the narrative indicated as far as whether we need to widen the area that's right there that goes over the river, the creek, for the abutments of the bridge or any of those types of things, we widened it out by 20 feet and we're waiting. WHKS said they did some preliminary work, we haven't actually seen that, but we expect that we'll be able to have a dialogue rather soon with that. And that they can tell us if we need to widen it a little more. Right now, we've added 20 feet, which is this jog right here. If we need a little more, it doesn't impact any of the lots that we're talking about and we have no problem doing that based on the final design and that would be part of the final plat also. Staff also made a comment regarding the south part of the roadway and staff made the comment that what if the alignment changes a little bit? Whenever outlot D is actually developed in the future, if the alignment decides to turn down and actually come a little further south before it goes over when outlot D is platted, there's no problem actually providing that right of way at that time for the road on the south side. The other aspect of that is, is that outlot C, which is this triangle right here, we'd like to keep that as its own outlot as well because, well, we're asking for part of that. There's a small triangle right in here that's about 20,000 square feet. And we believe that it's an unusable remnant as far as the developer goes. And based on its location, it would be a pretty good opportunity for a trailhead or other uses as far as parkland goes. And we would like to actually try and negotiate some credit for some of that land. But if at this time you don't, the city doesn't want to do a negotiation and trade us for parkland dedication, that's fine. We would simply just maintain or hold on to this outlot as it's shown right there. I'll get to the environmental conservation easement here in a minute, but we're okay with just holding on to that property for future use, it could be used in other parts of the development. The next outlot we show is this outlot E. And as part of that discussion, I believe that we have come up with a very, very good solution as far as some of this land that goes all the way down to the creek. And we are in agreement that if we set up something like an environmental conservation easement for all of that floodplain area that's, that runs along the creek. And that whether it's a maintenance agreement at this time and it's filed with the deeds, whenever the property sells, we believe that's a win-win for everybody and we really like this concept. We think it's a good model for you to move forward on. Basically, it allows the developer to keep property on the south end of all these lots, which is worth money, in the sale of the lot. The environmental conservation easement, as we have discussed, can certainly be rigorous. It can have lots of language in it that allows the city to require those landowners to maintain those areas, keep them free of debris, make sure they aren't putting things in those areas that shouldn't be there according to the floodplain section. It allows for it to remain in the tax base versus actually coming out as simply city property. It actually stays in the tax base, we've had some emails going back and forth. And right now, that land could literally be worth 54 cents a square foot to the city and the county if it remains as part of the developable lot. So we think that's a win-win scenario for everybody and we're pretty happy about it. We think it's a good model if we can move forward with it and we think it works good. So coming back to lot E, if this part of it works in the final plat or in the plat process and in this approval process, the developer would take outlot E and subdivide this so that these parcels could have land that would come down there. The easement would still be on the property, it would be exactly the same as we're trying to do on the 10 lots in Blaine's 14th. But it would allow for, and just a straw poll on our part, we believe that four or five of these nine property owners are interested in purchasing that property. So sell it to them, it would become part of their property, which increases the value of their property. It now comes into the tax base, it's a usable lot and it would still have the environmental conservation easement over it that would allow you to enforce it along there. But it would basically get rid of some of these remnants that are all along this river and it would just clean up the area and we'd be very, very happy to do that, which is why we want to keep outlot E as its own outlot. If it works in this process, whenever we do this block right here and we lay. If it works in this process, whenever we do this block right here and we lay that out that way, then the developer would try it again on those, on that piece of property there and try and sell those lots to those adjacent landowners. And then we come to all of outlot D. So we've shown the environmental conservation easement on this side, on the south side of the river. We've shown a trail on there that we have no problem putting on the plat. It's a 20-foot wide trail, we've left it at the top of the bank. When you look at the topography, most places, there's less than a foot across that 20-foot, a foot drop across that 20 feet, it's sitting up on top. But to bring that trail through there and designate that now as a trail, we have no problem. And then it allows for this, basically takes care of the entire remnant of what is that parcel 700 that we're talking about. So we believe that all of those are good approaches for subdividing this property. And so we would like the plat, the preliminary plat that we've produced, with those outlots, understanding why we have those outlots laid out the way we do, as I just explained to you, shown on there, because they make sense and they have value to both the city and to the developer the way we have them laid out. There were two other items that were in the proposed resolutions from HKGI that I wanted to make note of that should also be part of this. If you are agreeable to accepting this plat, there were two items. One of them is item 2C on both of the, what are these called by the way? Draft option A and draft option B for the resolutions. This came back on WHKS's original layout and what's shown on this preliminary plat under item 2C is that we show a 30-foot easement that comes through here versus a 40-foot easement.
Did you show me where that was again?
Yeah, it's between lots four and five. And so basically to connect the sewer out of this, we would run the sewer down and connect into the trunk line. And so that easement would be through here and we show it on this preliminary plat as a 30-foot easement, not a 40-foot easement. The trunk line is a 30-foot easement. There are no manholes. The manhole that it would connect, the new manhole would be in the city street and the existing manhole in the trunk line would be there. There wouldn't be any manholes in that stretch. And it'll be an eight-inch line versus a 12-inch line. And so we believe that a 30-foot easement is appropriate versus a 40-foot easement, but that one can still be talked about amongst yourselves and it's not a deal breaker, but we'd like it shown as a 30-foot easement. And then the other item is item 3C. It says the developer shall acquire an easement at the end of 13th Street. And so I think we looked at that and we don't want this preliminary plat to be held up on that particular account because if you're requiring us to make an agreement on a piece of property that we don't know we can make an agreement on as a condition, we would instead say that we would give up one or two of these lots at the end of 13th Street and turn it into a temporary turnaround until such time as a property may or may not be available at the end of 13th on somebody else's property. So we do think that there's room there for a hammerhead temporary turnaround. If it was a final construction, we know we would have to have a cul-de-sac, but I think right now that we could build a temporary hammerhead turnaround based on only losing one or two lots at the end of the street. And then our development wouldn't be contingent on trying to acquire somebody else's property, which is, if you guys approved it today, they'd almost have us, you know, it'd almost be carte blanche for us to get that one done. So those were the only two items with regards to that, plus our preliminary plat. And so before I move on to the other item regarding the payment for the parkway, if you have any questions regarding this plat and the way I've explained it, I'd love to answer those right now if you have any questions for me.
I have a question about, I believe it's outlot E, is that the pink one that you said people want to buy the dirt there?
Yes.
Is that the one that's been the big hot button issue here lately that's behind infesting homes?
No, the castle is actually farther down south here and up. And there wasn't a good plan like we, I believe we really have a good plan this time with the environmental conservation easement and actually putting, giving you guys a hammer to use to make sure people do what's supposed to happen there. Because I think the other thing that you should do, and staff can certainly talk to you about it, but you should just amend section 153, which is the floodplain district section. And if you actually amend that to include environmental conservation easement language, then you can use administrative means to actually enforce it right within the city. It's like writing a ticket if it was actually in your ordinance. And it would be a simple addition to your floodplain ordinance saying that if there's an environmental conservation easement, then the property owners are responsible for keeping it clear and for taking care of it and not putting stuff in there. And that if you don't comply after you've been notified, then the city can come in and they can find you and they can do what they need to do. And it could all be as an administrative means versus just the maintenance agreement that we might be starting out with. What?
Oh, no, I just was pointing to Charlie, that would be his, you know, his job.
Well, you'll get to walk the creek once or twice a year. It'll be a...
Again?
Yeah, bring your shotgun, I'm sure there's dogs.
Are there any other questions for Les on that issue? Otherwise, I don't know, Brandon, maybe we can address those issues before we move on to the parkway question even, if you've got some feedback on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're kind of muddied the waters to some extent and we have a draft resolution in the council packet. And to all of a sudden just start discussing an option C that really hasn't been reviewed by staff or is not part of the staff recommendation, we either got to boil what Les is referring to, or go back to our option A and B in our resolutions and add or subtract conditions from there.
And I think that's probably what we would be looking at doing, you know, with, you mentioned option C and I think, you know, your option, you're trying, basically you're looking to take an option B and you want to make some tweaks to that. You know, that's where they're talking about the environmental easement.
That and in that particular document, she requested that all of this, all of this be included as a outlot, part of outlot D. And I believe there's justification for leaving outlot D as it is.
Sure. I don't think that was the case. The pond is already, always going to be in its own outlot. It was everything south of the, I'll call it the sewer line easement, that was going to be in one contiguous outlot.
Are you in agreement that you don't want that last, that southern part of the road shown on here?
I don't know if that's going to be an issue with, I don't know, maybe that's something we can resolve if everything else moves forward. I don't think it...
Okay.
It has its advantages, disadvantages at the end of the day.
If we do get rid of the road, we would be fine with turning that pink part, cut the road off and making all of that all as part of one outlot because the developer would still then have control over that outlot C that we're referring to, which would be fine.
Correct. And just to back up even further, you know, the planning is only conditioned, or recommended, recommended condition of approval included all of that from the sewer line easement, which is kind of the north side of the creek, to the south and being an outlot, basically that floodplain, which included that area in pink there and kind of the back of the lots, lots was the recommendation for planning and zoning. In our discussion with the developer, there was the talk of owning south, the property owners owning south of that sewer line easement. So then that brought forward the discussion of having the environmental corridor over the top of basically the floodplain. So I think that's item number one that the planning commission should, or excuse me, the city council should look at, are ultimately in here, the two, option A and option B includes requiring that to be in an outlot from the sewer line easement, which is essentially the Hunter floodplain, to the other side of the Hunter floodplain. So I think that's maybe the point of starting.
If we went with option A, option B would allow us to put the environmental easement over top of it and still own the property to the river.
That's right.
Correct. Along with the, the staff is recommending if that's going to be owned by property owners to have a maintenance agreement for that area that's down the floodplain. Reason why is the same reasons the planning and zoning commission talked about requiring this as an outlot due to maintenance. We're, Charlie just walked in looking at maintaining this. We've had complaints with the casel addition, we've had some flooding issues. We're looking at potentially even channelizing, somehow doing some work back there and just having environmental corridor, corridor not having that in a lot may restrict some of our work back there. So to kind of meet in the middle, we went with the environmental corridor because the other municipalities and townships do have environmental corridors and do require maintenance of those environmental corridors. So that's where we got to the secondary option that staff has presented you tonight.
So the only thing that you just brought up that might not be shown on here is that from that floodplain line, which is basically that line going across there, that you would like it moved up to the southern edge of...
Correct. That's what we've discussed and that's what's in the staff recommendation. In addition to that, your Hunter floodplain that's shown there, if you look at the elevation, it's actually right touching the south end of that sewer line easement. So if you were to look at those elevations, that's where you'd actually define Hunter floodplain. In addition to that...
You're talking about down here?
Correct. Yep. That's actually going to be slightly wider once you look at those elevations and the topography.
But south of the easement, this dot hatch would actually come up and cover that land right in there.
Environmental corridor and utility easements would follow the south.
And then we wouldn't have to worry about any type of construction questions because you would already have access to it through the environmental...
Environmental corridor, the drainage and utility easement.
Agreeable. That's doable.
So the maintenance part of that, if it's going to be private ownership, is what's in the staff recommendation for option A and, or excuse me, the option A, whatever one.
A is for the outlot, B would be the environmental easement.
B is if we have environmental easement and it's not on fee by the city to the outlot.
So then the only difference between the B proposition would be this outlot E. And her recommendation, she said that should, that this outlot should come all the way up here and we would like outlot E in this plat, platted as its own outlot. And the environmental easement can still lay on top of it, we're perfectly fine with that, we think that's a great idea.
So I guess that's the discussions if the city council wants to continue having, you know, basically floodplain, floodways as private ownership, you know, the ships kind of sailed to some extent in the casel addition. We're perpetuating that upstream and with, for the reason we talked about earlier and why we would want that in the outlot. So I think that maybe goes back to questions if we're gonna, we're not going to require the outlot for the, kind of the areas in green there, then at Les's point, why doesn't the area in pink have the same sort of thing, environmental corridor with the maintenance agreement? So something we could look at or consider.
And we believe, we believe it's a good model for you, instead of taking the land out, you'd still have access to the land and the easement would cover your access to it and anything that needed to be. And it'd be well stipulated, especially if you amended the floodplain ordinance.
What happens if down the line, if that land is privately owned and Charlie, if the city needs to go in and do something to that land to benefit landowners either upstream or downstream, Melanie, would we be obligated to eminent domain that land for those purposes or am I creating trouble where there is no trouble?
I don't think eminent domain, but you would...
Or acquire it from the private landowner.
Or at least access somehow.
Sure.
I think that's what the environmental easement is.
The corridor would discuss that, so that's where kind of we got to get into some of the worries in the environmental corridor. In addition to that, we would have a drainage and utility easement. So we talked about the sewer line that needs to be potentially upgraded due to construction. We could be using that land to replace that utility, in this case, sanitary sewer line. I mean, what the issue is, is why, you know, I feel an outlot ultimately is a better, better outcome for the city is, we have people along the, you know, to the upstream of the casel addition, even in this area here, there's fire pits out there, there's people using property that's not theirs, this is only going to continue if it is their property and there's an easement, we could have structures out there and now we go to utility project and we're looking at additional costs there to either chase down that property or have them removed. Same thing happened on the East Main Street storm sewer project. People are using the river anyway. So what happens is across the board, when we do have utility easements there to protect our ultimate right to replace the utility, but it's easier said than done when the city doesn't own it and fee.
And the argument is...
So I think that's the discussion.
And the argument is, is that we ask for some type of compensation for it.
Sure.
The city has taken the stand that no compensation is required for it. And we completely disagree because even, there's a tax value to it, so there is some value associated with it. So if there is no compensation from the city, then the owner should be able to hold on to that property, sell it as part of that property. We're okay with the more restrictive corridor easement on there. But there is a value to it and we believe that if the city won't compensate us, then the developer can still get compensated by selling the larger parcel and those people would have that extra property and it would be worth more for their home lots.
Right. But what my question was, was if the city needed to do something bigger than sewer line, if there was some flood mitigation project that required that land to no longer be usable by the private property owner, are we buying trouble down the line by doing one of these options over the other? In terms of having, instead of if the city owns it versus the private property owners owning it, if the city owns it, we can do what needs to be done. If you have 10 to 12 private property owners that we suddenly have to negotiate with, that's what I'm asking.
I guess the question may fall back to, is our drainage and utility easement that is over those properties that give us the right to do whatever...
Sure.
...may or may not be a future project? That would be kind of the discussion.
Okay.
That's why the initial staff recommendation was, put an outlot, then we have to be titled to it, then it's the city's and then that issue kind of goes away.
Okay.
And at Les's point about being compensated for it, the developer is dedicating outlots for stormwater ponds, dedicating right-of-way. So staff's position is that a public floodplain corridor that's needed for a utility project that the city's looking at, this isn't something that we just made up. Dedicating that is not a compensation, just like the stormwater pond is not a compensation in addition to the right-of-way.
Okay. And I understood what you were saying. I just was trying to clarify.
And the other part is, is in reference to, other than keeping it clear, maintaining it, you have your own floodplain ordinance which actually dictates, there are uses that are approved in a floodplain. So people can put things, you can put a tennis court in a floodplain and it's compliant with, doesn't require a conditional use permit or anything. It's actually a compliant use in a floodplain. And so unless you're actually talking about a dam or a spillway or something, well then you roll into a whole different FEMA, you know, you got to do the, you got to do a whole bunch of other things. But simply by maintaining your own floodplain ordinance and having a hammer to use for the property owners that a maintenance agreement would get filed with the deed whenever the property sells, you'd have that. And if you upgraded or updated your ordinance itself, you would have plenty to dictate to property owners what needs to happen in those areas.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, no, I mean, I think, you know, we, just to go back to staff position, I mean, obviously we felt that the city acquiring the property was probably the best option because it seemed to us to make it simplest in terms of moving forward. You know, we appreciate the conversation we had with Carter and with Les. You know, this environmental easement is kind of new to the community, but something that our city engineers got experience with in other towns and he did a lot of good checking on it. And I think from our perspective, you know, you've got the maps and the packets in there. You know, our real concern is to protect the public in the long term and also going back to your point of enforcement is always going to be an issue. You know, if it's our property, the enforcement component is not as big of a problem. But I mean, maybe nine out of those 10 folks are going to be like, no problem, get down and do what you got to do. You know, it puts the onus on the city as opposed to put it in, you know. So I mean, that's just something we have to weigh. You know, Les talked about compensation, you know, staff's recommendation was, as Brandon described, you know, but, you know, the council makes the rules. You know, if that's something you'd like to consider, then, you know, it certainly is something that, you know, we'll do the best we can with. You know, it's a matter of, you know, parkland fee dedication, things like that, there may be some options there too. But, you know, that is, that is your, you know, your role here.
I've got a multitude of comments. First off, part of it, I'll admit, it's my fault because I wasn't in attendance at the last planning and zoning meeting. But I'm concerned about the process that we've gone through in which the preliminary plat... plat was reviewed at the planning commission and it appears that there were significant changes that occurred at the staff level that hasn't come back to the, to the finance only for review and for comment. I don't, is that true or isn't that true?
What specifically?
Well, I mean, the variations in the outlots and drawing of the lines and the recommendations that are being made.
I understand the recommendation is that the planning and zoning commission that the entire corridor, I thought the floodplain corridor-
Yep.
-from the sanitary sewer easement to the southern extent of the floodplain was to be an outlot. And if we started off with that, sign that that was the, the planning and zoning recommendation-
Yep.
-in the discussion to give up the developer, they took some issue to that and wanted some conversations. So we tossed out the secondary option for the planning, excuse me, the council to consider. Maybe your point, it was not brought back to planning and zoning. They staff viewed that, I would view that as more of a council decision whether or not a corridor is it protected through an outlot or is it protected through an environmental corridor with a maintenance agreement on privately. I guess I personally view that as a council decision, not a planning and zoning commission decision, but if that's something you want to bring back, we definitely could. Now I'd have, I'd have to get into the details a little more if there's something else that changed, but-
I think one of them would be, and it was an argument back and forth, had to do with whether or not it was a requirement that we plat the entire PID. And so common practice would be not to do that, that only plat what we needed to. There was lots of discussions that yes, we should account for the entire PID and so that's now shown on this preliminary plat. One of the differences, and that's, and that's an administrative thing, I believe, that we're accounting for all of the property that's in the 700 parcel number. So that particular change, it was still shown on the preliminary plat that we submitted, but we showed it as unplatted. Now we're simply showing it as an outlot. That would be another, I think those would be the two main change, differences between the two.
And to Lesus' points, I would agree, that's more of an administrative than, that affects a planning and zoning decision. And to your point, there is, Laura did provide recommendations, conditions with red lines. I believe that is from the planning and zoning commission's meeting to maybe help you-
Yep.
-follow what, what's kind of been tweaked or what we're considering. Again, I think the biggest thing is the outlot versus private ownership with some sort of environmental-
Yeah, which, which is the, the whole corridor discussion I, I'm taking that was never discussed at the planning commission.
I believe so, correct.
Yeah.
But again, you know, how does the city council want to protect their environmental corridors?
Well, and that, for us to discuss, I guess, obviously the planning commission has recommended that it not be private ownership. So if, if we go that route, then the issue of compensation comes up and then we have to determine if that's something that we need to do and whether we can do that through parkland credit, which is part of our fee schedule or not. The fact that we've had some issues with the casel property, some property owners infringing on it, taking care of it, complaining that their next door neighbor is letting the weeds grow and it's invading their lawns and stuff, I'd like to eliminate all of that. And if that's through the complete outlot, I think that's probably the way to go. I, the environmental corridor, it just creates another policing problem with administration, which we already have a problem with some of our zoning policing. And we're adding insult to injury. Now, if we're going to hire a zoning administrator to be responsible for policing that, then we're having a different discussion.
Sure. Correct me if I'm wrong, but-
I agree with, I agree with Dwayne 100%.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't, don't we already have some property in City Caston that is owned by the creek, by private individuals? Not over in this area, but farther?
The casel property and I don't know in-
Those properties up in Johnson Street, Johnson's area. All that property along the creek was sold, the builder had sold it to the property owners after they had built there.
Well, and it's-
And there's a pond.
But the question, do we want to perpetuate that?
But I mean, has there been any issues with that there is where I'm going? I mean, that's all in, I don't even know that's in an environmental conditioning there. But I mean, there's an outlet pond that's owned by an individual, but technically it's the city's pond, but it was sold with the property. You know, has there been any issues with that?
I would assume the intent of that project was that pond be conveyed back to the city. And projects never was in this convey to private property.
I know they had to, it was added to the private property so they could even sell it to build a house on. So I don't know if it was ever, there's a right of way for the city to go in it, but I don't think the city, does the city own it? I don't know.
No, they don't. There's may or may not be to use it over the top of it, but could be a problem to-
Right.
-the whole point of how do we find a fee and use and make sure we get what we need to protect our public infrastructure.
But I would just, you know, making sure that it was out there just in case if that one mattered any, because I know there was property along there that's-
Whichever way we do it, it needs to be consistent with both pieces.
Mm-hmm.
A little piece in the pink down there and the rest in the green. We have to do it the same way for both. We can't chop it up that the-
Right.
... So what compensation are we, are we looking at there?
Well, I, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't, I don't think that in this particular case, that if you have a means, which would be an environmental conservation easement, that is just as enforceable as a utility easement. Just like with a utility easement, you can't build on top of a utility easement. You enforce those all the time. To say that this is any different than being able to enforce regular easements, you've had some difficulties because I don't believe you really had that good of a model. I look at this and I think this is an outstanding model for you to move forward on, but I don't know that it's necessarily the city's responsibility to own everything just because it's easier versus actually taking the land. We've had some discussions as far as what is property worth and the property is worth a lot if we actually plat it as part of the lot. It's actually worth a lot more than if it's just a big outlot. And that's our point. It's worth something to the developer to sell it as part of those parcels. So can that price be negotiated? Yeah, it could be. But in this particular case, a strict environmental corridor easement solves most of the problems with regards to it and it still gives the benefit to the current, to the developer as part of the, the property. So I don't know that we'd ever come to the fact of, of what would be the dollar value because the trail along here, and we've already had this discussion as well, and this one was even in the planning and zoning, the original discussion, is that if we comply with the requirements of parkland dedication, that's a 20-foot easement for almost a half a mile that goes along there, that would satisfy our parkland dedication for the current, for the current, yeah, for the, for the stuff that we're building right now. And that's certainly doable. So it's more than just parkland dedication here, that's actually some type of a value on the land and the developer would like to keep the land and sell the land. And we believe that this mechanism is a pretty good model for us to do that and still give you the opportunity to enforce it. Because there's lots of uses for that property and so I don't necessarily agree with the comment that it's just more difficult because there are uses in your own ordinance. So if you're saying that there aren't any uses, well then you would have an argument that I would have to listen to that says, okay, you have to have the property for it. But there's lots of uses that are in the ordinance. Tennis courts, driving ranges, trap shooting, there's all kinds of uses that are, that are already included in the ordinance. And they don't even require a conditional use permit. So it wasn't intended that you take over all of that property. It was intended that people use it, but they stay out of the floodplain and they don't endanger, you know, you're not supposed to park a mobile home down there, that's for sure, because that baby starts floating away. That's common sense. But there's lots of uses that are, that are already permitted without conditional use permits in the floodplain district. So I believe that from a landowner point of view, there's lots of things that can happen there that are within the ordinance that homeowners can do.
Where does the floodplain come up within the yellow block?
Um, the dots that are in your drawing, that is that line and that line.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's actually what the floodplain is and then what we just discussed is that this overlay would actually come up a little farther north to the south side of the trunk line easement, which is, again, you aren't going to be able to put something on the one side of the easement. I mean, it'll just be grass, but I don't have a problem with that being up to that easement.
What does it do to your lot lines if we went with option A?
Well, what ends up happening is, is that the lots, the size of the lots are still buildable, but they aren't worth as much considering that they basically overlook the creek, which actually makes these prime lots. Especially whenever we get down on the south side here, if you remember the GDP, the GDP shows 20 lots along this south line and again, that's, you know, that's, that's worth several tens of thousands of dollars on those 20 lots. And we believe that's probably worth about 30,000 or 40,000 for those 10 lots. Just makes them smaller and then the person doesn't own the property.
But it doesn't change the, the lot sizes as, I mean, it does not change the number of lots that you've got platted.
No.
Okay.
No, it does not.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not thinking very well on my questions today.
It just increases the depth from 30, 35 feet to 52 feet, depending on the lot.
Okay.
Yeah. So these coming down to this, that's 118 feet down to there and then you add another 100 feet, so now these become 200-foot deep lots that are, that are nice lots and they're, those lots are actually wider, so they're designed for bigger, higher dollar homes. And that's, it's a, it's an amenity. It's an amenity to this first part of the development. So I think based on that, the only thing we would ask for, in agreement on option B, with an outlot E shown here, if we had to do it at another time, we could still do this with the environmental easements shown on here and turn all of that into outlot B and bring that one back to the planning commission and see if we could get that turned into an outlot in another process. I believe that would satisfy the-
Yeah, I don't disagree. If, if the council's making that decision to not put an outlot back there, then make it consistent. And we might as well do this part of this project, part of this planning process is not opinion, but I'm saying it's a developer decision.
I don't know if that was clear, but the, the B, the B option, the B option basically would make all of this outlot, well, let me do it this way. It would make all of this-
Okay.
-as one outlot.
Okay.
Here we have it shown as one. It, if, if, if this piece of property was part of this plat, then this would have to be an outlot just because it's not connected to anything.
Sure.
But if all of that is contiguous land, then all of that would be a single outlot at this time and then we would be in, basically we would have, it would be option B. Option B for the resolution, I believe.
Yes. And the consideration would be made if you want to plat the, though that's something pink there.
At a, at a separate process.
Yeah, or it could be incorporated, it'd be a little easier probably, but whatever the developer will want to do.
But a single outlot would bring us back to option B with discussion from Brandon on, can we get by with a 30-foot easement here versus a 40-foot easement? And we would not like a condition on the end of 13th to be us acquiring somebody else's property at this time because basically that would stranglehold this one because we would, we don't necessarily know that we could get that easement. We haven't had much success with that particular landowner.
And Lesus, to me, clarify, I don't think that's much of an issue. The, the resolution tonight in the staff recommendation includes discussing getting an easement from that property and not actually securing the property to build a turnaround as we all described that we need. And then if not, we were fine with, you know, killing a lot of-
Eliminating a lot there and making it-
The reason why we do it as a staff recommendation is when the property develops to the north and that road's not built to the property line.
It's already, it's already there.
Well, it'd be short if we, if we had a temporary call to sec on the developer's property tonight. We could say, property owner, you declined to give him an easement, you're going to have to be stuck building that last 60th feet or below, whatever it is, just so that property owner can make that decision and then we can use that in the future when, when develop, when that next development happens. Oh, two issues we can work through.
And I'm, I'm in agreement and so the first part of this would be the option B for the resolution and at least as far as the plat goes. And I think we've just talked through them all and you all understand where we want to go with it and why we have it. And so we would be fine with, with that.
Okay.
All right? So now for part B. When these things came out of the printer, I put them in an envelope. So if you were to, there's nine copies there, so I think that should cover all the staff
Before you start, is this the same thing document that was provided to the planning commission?
No.
Previously?
No.
It's a similar, similar situation, Dwayne. It's a similar-
City of Woodbury.
Somewhat similar case, yeah.
This is the city of Dayton.
Yeah.
And this one is just written in plainer English. If you start on page five, the language is a lot clearer. And I'm going to make my point and it'll be up to you to decide. And the other thing that we turned in as far as our comments that came in with the preliminary plat submittal that we did last week, was my responses to those four items. I believe three of them are actually resolved through the plating process and item number four is a payment for the parkway. And so this particular document that I've given you, I believe it's written in a lot plainer English, but this is a summary judgment of the builders association versus the city of Dayton. And this is the second one. There's a third one out there going on right now. And all of this comes back to a Supreme Court ruling called Harstad versus the city of Woodbury. And for some reason, I, I want to simplify the process and you can still get legal opinions, but I did want to simplify what the, the basic understanding of this is. And so the city of Caston has the right to require new developments to pay for infrastructure, utilities, paving, curbs that are necessary for the development to proceed. And there is no question about that authority that you have. What came into question is whether or not you can require a cash payment for an infrastructure improvement. And in this particular case, we're talking about a cash payment for the parkway. And so it's an expensive parkway. If you look at your cross section in your comp plan, it's actually two roads. It has two sides of curb on one side and paving. It has two sides of curb and paving on the other. It has a boulevard in between it. It has cut-ins, so it's an expensive piece of paving for the parkway. Your city engineer can give you an estimate, but I believe my estimate is, is pretty, pretty straight on. I used numbers that I got from contractors for street construction in November and December. And we estimate this out to be about $300,000 worth of road construction for that stretch of parkway, which is this stretch right here. So, having said that, in this, in, in the original, in the, in the original part of this, the city, or these cities that are associated with this, basically required a cash payment for some infrastructure. And the question comes up, well, first of all, is this infrastructure required to support this development? And so you don't own the property to the east, it's not even annexed into the city yet, and you don't know when that'll be developed. The property to the north isn't annexed into the city, and you don't know when that'll be developed. You have a roadway section there, and a, and a, and the cross-section for this boulevard literally could carry 5,000 or 10,000 average daily trips, ADTs. So it's designed to carry a pretty good traffic amount, and there isn't any traffic out there right now, so what would be the justification for building this stretch of road? If it's not traffic impacts, is there a fire, life, and public safety impact? Blaine's 14th actually doesn't even require showing a secondary access, because the number of units that are being built is less than the fire codes and the most planning codes require, and so a single access in and out of Blaine's 14th is adequate. So I believe, and I'm not understating this, I don't think, that your opinion, or your, your, your program, is that new residential development pays its own way and that all associated costs for the installation of public infrastructure to serve new residential development be the sole responsibility of the developing property owner. I believe that is, and I've heard it many, no, not many times, but several times, that that is the approach that the city council wants your developments to take, is that people pay for their own ways and these developments need to pay for it. Interestingly enough, the sentence that I just read actually came out of Harstad versus Woodbury, because that was Woodbury's approach. They said, you got to pay for it, and this is what it is. There's been some misunderstanding that the geography of where this development occurs has something to do with whether or not you can ask cash for it. And I believe that this document that I just gave you is pretty clear on it, it doesn't really matter whether it's five feet or five miles from where this development is occurring, is that if you're only asking for cash for this roadway, then you are basically violating the Supreme Court ruling. And so if you look at whether you want to follow or not, but on page five, it says that a statutory city, this is in the last paragraph about middle of the way, a statutory city may not impose an infrastructure charge when the infrastructure charge does not contemplate a return of funds. And so what the point here is, is that you're asking for the developer to pay, and let's just say we all agree that it's $300,000. You're asking the developer to pay $300,000, but you're not giving him a clear path on how he is to then, a little bit farther, to the applicant, in the event that the applicant satisfies all the conditions tied to that security, how does he get that money back, and how does he satisfy the construction of that new infrastructure? Well, we don't know when it will be built, we don't know how it'll be built, and so you aren't actually giving the developer, in this case, a clear path on how he can actually satisfy this requirement and take back any of that money. So it doesn't matter of geography, it's a simple thing, and that's, that's what this is, and that's why we believe we shouldn't have to pay that money. So I gave you this, it's written in some pretty clear English, and on page six, there's even a simpler stat in both instances, this is the second to the last paragraph, last sentence, developers are required to pay some type of fee to gain approval without the ability to recruit the funds if they complete and install the required improvements. So you could tell the developer, well, you just go build that road then, but you can't justify the building of the road under your own, under the statute. And if you do, or if you just want the cash, because you want to build it in the future, well, then you can't do that, because you haven't given the developer any way to get his money back if he completes the process. And it's, it's, it is what, it is what, it's an anomaly, it's just the perfect storm at this particular time, and cities are faced with it all the time. When you read this particular ruling, you'll see that the City of Danbury actually made up a different ordinance and came up with some other ideas, and the Supreme Court, or the judge basically ruled that that didn't work either. So in short, what we're looking for is to approve this preliminary plat without the payment, because we don't believe it's justified or legal. And so let's just, just look at, look at what happens next. If the developer takes this to court, and if you follow the document that I just gave you, if you look there on page one or two, you can see basically what would happen, is that the developer would file a complaint, the City of Cassin would have to answer it, and they'd have to basically say why Harstad versus Woodbury doesn't apply. The same time, they would file a summary, request for summary judgment, and the judge would basically say, does this apply to that Supreme Court ruling, or doesn't it? It's not a lengthy process, if you look, if you follow the one for Woodbury, it actually looks like, oh, page two, it says they started in August, and the court heard it by the first of November and made a decision. If the developer loses, the whole project stops, because the developer can't afford that kind of money to actually give for this development. If the developer wins, then if you look on the last page of that ruling, we'd be able to ask for legal fees, plus you'd have your own legal fees. And then sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for, you could just say, well, let him take it to court and let's see, and then we'll deal with it at that time. But you also realize that once the court rules, then everything from August 15, 2018, all of your development agreements, whether they're commercial or residential, would also be subject to that same ruling here in the City of Cassin, and there might be other developers and other cases that you'd have to deal with, with regards to it, so that'd be basically the next, the last two years of whatever you've actually done. So what we're asking is...
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Why would it pull in the last two years' worth of developments? Is it a determination that was just reached by the Supreme Court in the last calendar year?
No, it was actually ruled on August 15, 2018.
Okay.
And that was the Supreme Court ruling.
Okay.
This particular case is just a summary judgment...
Right.
...where they're asking the court...
Right, no, I understand what you're...
And so that's, 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 we're asking that this not be a requirement for this, for this development to go forward. And so that was written in my response, and that would require city council action to get that condition waived as part of this approval process. So I've bored you enough with that particular item, but I did want to get it out in front of you, so that you could understand what the process is and where we go. If you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them. Okay.
Any specific questions that we have? Not for the last, um... It's kind of a strange situation, right? You're basically being threatened with, if you don't take that out, we start going to do a development. Okay. It seems rather odd that they got this point to approve the preliminary plat, now it's here, so I'll just go ahead and say we table the plat and consider it a later date? I mean, I...
I agree.
Are we on timelines on this?
Where are we at? I mean, just come throw all that in right now, and then give a, whatever, we can't make a decision on this, right?
I can co-sign the other tile where Carter actually sent us the letter extending it, because I don't remember the date.
Why don't you give that one? It'd be good.
It was signed January 28th.
I, I still think that the city, what we're asking for is different than these legal cases that he keeps bringing in.
That's my interpretation of this, too, is that it's not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison for summary judgment purposes. There would be facts that would not be completely agreed to upfront.
Agreed. This is, this specifically refers to an off-site transportation charge, very similar to what the Woodbury case did. That's not what we're talking about here with this plat. This is within the platted limits. We're not asking for a cash payment, we're asking first security. If he doesn't want to provide the security, then build the parkway. It's within the platted limits, or it's, it's within the limits of the plat.
So maybe just, might have limited about this whole subject in general. So off-site transportation charge, would that be if we had a transportation fee that we charged to all developments, and we put it in a pot of money, and then three years from now, we go build a road over northwest somewhere, because that's...
That's pretty much what Woodbury was sort of doing. They kind of had, and they've had a lot of development there, so they had built up a pretty good account, and, I mean, so I think, you know, the, our city attorney is absolutely right, that's not what we're looking at, this is a joint, you know, road, that I think the planning commission has identified as a real need in terms of our, our comprehensive plan.
The bigger option would be to create, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but create an overlay district for that northeast section that, with the land that's not annexed, because if, if the road is reflected in our comprehensive plan, we create a overlay district, and so that whole area ultimately contributes to the cost of this road when it's built.
Yeah, that would be, I would do that as what they're describing of not having the statutory authority to do that of the transportation charge.
Over an overlay district?
I believe so.
But if, if they're saying they don't want to put a road in, it's going to affect all the lots that are butt next to it, you wouldn't be able to sell any of those lots, because you wouldn't know the future of the road, you wouldn't know the future of the lots, we wouldn't be able to plat those.
Well, just the way, the way this plat is, and we've actually worked with the developer, because it was slicing right through their property, we moved it all the way to the northeast corner, that went back, I think, even last fall, moved it to the northeast corner, so it was a small impact to that property to try to lessen that length of that road.
Mm-hmm.
But Dan, the bigger picture, your point is, if we don't build it, then when the property to the north is developed, then that road is not there, now who builds that road?
Right.
To Les's point we started with, the council direction is development pays for development, now we have this road cost out here that I'm sure the property to the north isn't too keen on paying road, paying for a road that's not within their platted limit, so if nobody wants to pay for it, then the road doesn't ever get built, and we don't ever build any more houses, and we're not developing anymore, is the other part of that. Because if nobody wants to pay for roads, if developers don't want to pay for it, if the cities don't want to pay for it, well, then, then I guess we're not developing anymore, so...
The request for the extension that came from the developer indicates that May 16, 2020, would be our, the city's deadline to act on the application.
And that's in an agreement that was signed by...
By the developer.
Okay. So that, that would basically have two regular scheduled meetings, we'd even have the cancellation in the first meeting in April, we'd have the second meeting in April and the first meeting in May, if that's what the council wants.
We need to make a decision, I'm just not prepared to make a decision.
Sure, no, I agree, yeah, we do have to make a decision, it doesn't have to be done tonight, so absolutely.
I didn't have till 10 minutes ago, some of it.
And I don't think you want to sit here and have me spend my time reading through this while you guys all sit there, because I can't, you just handed me a court decision, I can't make a decision without reading it.
Sure, no, I think that'd be the advisable thing, what the mayor was talking about, to me, it would make sense to, to table it and then bring it back, obviously, you know, you've had a chance to look at it, but just understanding all the discussion points that Les brought up, which are, you know, valid, fair to think about, and, but so, we know kind of where the city's at, or at least staff has been at, and then also where the developer's coming from, so that's, those are things you can weigh in your own mind, and we can take it up at a later date.
So then just, just like, as I'm thinking about this, or looking at it, get, so we're asking that they build it, or put up some kind of credit that says they will build it when it needs to be...
Through the development process, correct?
Okay.
At a later date, knowing that that, that was going to be built when the next property to the north was going to be developed, or at a certain sunset point.
Are we asking for a cash payment?
Nope.
So we're not asking for cash?
Correct.
Are we asking for a escrow payment?
Correct. Well, we haven't decided that, but I think...
That would be the option, that's where we'll secure it.
That's what I've seen other development here that's included. So this isn't anything new, this is, I don't know, almost standard operating procedure in other developments that we've done, so, through development, through the process.
Well, the other is, is the road that Les has described, is that firm? Is that the type of road that we fully intend to put in there?
Let me add a little bit on that. When we plat this out, we're going to set the alignment of that road through this planning process, so that'll firm up the alignment of it. The typical section, the cross-section of it, was done through the comprehensive planning process, so there is a cross-section that Les alluded to, showing, and it's not necessarily two roads, it's two lanes that have a paved, or excuse me, a turf boulevard between them. That was decided in the comprehensive planning process, now we can still look at that, because it was just the comprehensive planning process, but that's what everybody's been working off from this point, so this isn't something that staff came up with.
So we feel like just build a regular city street, like Fifth, it wouldn't have to have a boulevard in the middle?
Yeah, we, we could build a collector's street and not have the boulevard in the center.
We, we could, again, as we came with the comprehensive planning process, to have this more boulevard concept, because this road is going to go from this development all the way to the north to 16th Street, and there's going to be hundreds of houses using this as their main collector roadway through there, so we'd be limiting access as we develop to the north, that having the houses get to this road to get up to 16th Street to get in and out of town, so that was the big picture of comprehensive planning process, and we had discussion of the court...
But we can change that if we want to.
Always.
So just, Charlie, from a maintenance standpoint, though, boulevards, I don't think paying the butt. I'm not a big design guy, but I'm, I'm going more for if I'm driving a snowplow. I want it to be wide enough to get everybody else that needs to get out, and to get our emergency crew down there and take care of it.
You don't want to be out there mowing the middle of it, either.
Trees planted in the middle of the road, I could care less.
But if it was a, the, the courtless plan now in a typical city street, I don't think the cost is, the, the discussion is still there, the cost, I don't think...
Okay, so it does affect that process, all right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Did the public part of this close, or am I...
You can, yeah, you can.
Um, we would like to be, we, we would like, at whatever your next meeting is, we'd like dispensation on, you know, disposition of this, one way or another, because it...
Oh, sure, yep.
That's what's required for us to take our next step.
Sure.
So if you feel, if you feel confident in, in what you're doing, that's fine with us, but we just want, we just want that part of it resolved.
Yep.
All right. Well, we certainly plan on having that in our next council meeting as an old business item, or, you know, public item, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda for that, for us.
Now, are we, are we looking, are we discussing, or is the council interested in discussing resolving the outlot versus private ownership of the floodplain issue, is that up for discussion to break it down, or we want to pump that till the next meeting?
We could do that right now, and then mainly this whole road, the road issue for the next meeting, but I think we can go back to the first part as far as that one big outlot, or the environmental easement for that.
I'll start the discussion on that, with the easement, or the end, the street that ends that we talked about, that they were going to create a turnaround in that final lot, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with the 30-foot easement between the houses, 10 feet down from what has been recommended, but 10 feet greater than what was planted, right? So if 30 feet will work, as I, I, it seems reasonable, but...
If I could, let, let's just look at that from an engineering standpoint, my biggest concern is we have to go in there and dig that pipe out, if we don't have a wide enough piece, and we're going to have houses falling into our hole, or into our excavation, which I guess we don't want, so, Les and I can work through that from an engineering standpoint, I don't think that's too big of an issue, but...
How big of a...
I get a lot of the cut, that's, that's the problem, is I don't, it's not the pipe size, it's going to be the excavation and keeping excavation from having houses drop into the hole is going to be the biggest thing.
Okay.
We can work through that, I don't think it's an issue.
Whatever mediation...
Whatever they can agree on, we're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I agree with the pink being into the green, and the orange into the green, as Les presented.
The color would come in handy if you knew.
Yeah. I identified, yeah, option B. I still have some hesitancy on the environmental corridor, because it's not in line with what the planning and zoning have recommended, and I'm just concerned about the need for policing, you know, if, if we can police it adequately, I'm okay with it, but if we can't...
I understand where you're coming from. I guess I'm more on the side of we don't need to own more land. We can, we can put some kind of teeth in it.
That's, that's where it comes up to.
And follow-up. The key's going to come with follow-up. We put the teeth in it because it's consistent with the land that's right next to it. Because the land to the, it would be south, east, west of that.
Well, that's case all same.
Is an outlot or whatever it's with the, he owns it.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Consistent with other land on the creek right now of ownership by private. It, and I understand the builder's point. It is actually a huge selling item. If I was buying a lot and I owned that, but I knew there was stipulation, I would buy that, you know, versus having that outlot back there. Because if it's not maintained, we, I have the option to maintain it if I own it. Because I've, there's too many times I've seen things say they're going to get maintained and they don't. It's because we don't have the manpower. We don't have the money. I understand. So.
I think we saw before Kiesel, whatever happened there and they offered these individuals for sale. The individuals took care of it. They mowed it. They did, yeah, they put fire pits and yard barns down there that.
Didn't belong.
We just have to do a better job. If it doesn't belong, it doesn't belong. We have to say something. But it's when it became not theirs, then it wasn't maintained. Well, you know, it probably should be mowed so we don't get, you know. So I, I'm, I'm all for the private ownership. If I was selling the lots, I'd want to have a two-hundred-foot depth lot. Heck, if they'd have sold them last July, it would have been lakefront property, not creekfront property. So. You know, I just, you know, I just, I, I, I get where they're coming, I get where you're coming from too, but I think to be consistent with the creek bed there, but, but it comes back to us. Just like with our conditional use permits or anything else that we say, here's the easement, here's the rules, we have to.
Enforce it.
Enforce it or be willing to enforce it. So there's the, you know, so if we have those on there, we, we need to enforce it. I think we need to do a better job of that anyway, just even on our conditional use permits over the years. We probably have some of those. We should build a dust off of them.
I mean, is that, if that's a place where you're going, I guess my question would be, you know, getting this into a state where we feel it's adequate before it, you know, before this project's finished. So I mean, is that something that we can say, okay, developer, it's your property right now, you know, we want you to maintain it and we want to make sure when this is turned over to Dwayne buys a new house, no, he never will, he's got a nice house anyways. But if he bought a house there, like when that homeowner takes over, you know, I don't, next, next month I have to go down there and say, nope, you just bought this and now you're on the hook and you've got to clean it up and all that sort of thing too. Because I mean, you know, if, if we don't go in there, we don't do our job over the next five years after a person buys it and it's a mess and we got to go charge somebody something, that's fine. But it needs to be at a state where it's, it's good. I guess that's a bad word, but it's adequate.
It's agreeable to the owner when it's, that's.
It's adequate to offer that to them when the property turns over. And I don't know legally how you can do that, but to me, at least we're starting off and we're saying, yep, when this property was sold, it was okay. And now, you know, it's, it's my job, it's Charlie's job to go down there and say, okay, what's going on? Is it being maintained? And, and, you know, then it's, it's, it's fair to the property owner too.
You put that in the development agreement, which is part of the final process that we go through here and.
I mean, but that would be something that, you know, we can work it out. Because to me, that's the thing is.
It would be a responsibility, it would be a responsibility of the developer owner at this particular point that fallen dead logs and miscellaneous debris are cleaned out of there and you have that op, you have that, uh, right in the development agreement and before you sign off on the street and all the other things that the city signs off on. It's a condition of, of, of that.
Sure. Just a little point from me, the staff has recommended put a maintenance agreement against each of those parcels. So if they're owning that area, then within that environmental corridor, there's a maintenance agreement, which will be recorded against the property. So whenever a property owner buys that lot for the first time, there could be a recorded maintenance agreement that lays out the maintenance responsibility and we've added other conditions on our maintenance of private ponds. That says if you don't maintain it, the city will maintain it and send you a bill.
And that gets filed with the deed as soon as someone buys it. And if you write, you know, if your attorney, if your attorney writes it, I mean, that's, that's top-notch in our opinion. And then hopefully we make sure whoever buys it actually knows it upfront because a lot of people sign.
Know what their title is.
Well, they have to really, I mean, I know I had, uh, fifty pages that I went through when I bought my house. I'm sure you all have too. So, yeah. It has to be something that's very clear when that's translated.
They just show you where you need to sign.
Yeah, it's like, oh yeah, you just sign. You don't want, you don't want to, you know, I want to get this over with. So it's like, yeah.
You know what I'm saying though?
No, I do. I do. Yeah, absolutely. We, and we've talked about that with, uh, with some of the laterals and subpumps and things too, adding that to when people buy those homes, making sure that they're inspected at that point. So it's, it's just another item that we would have in that packet. So that's a good idea. Lonnie?
Yes?
Anything you'd like to add?
I.
You Phil.
You know, if, my biggest concern is, I know that we can police it and everything, but if I owned the property all the way to the river and say I sold it, my neighbor or somebody else bought it, my neighbor understands the rules, but the new owner, he sees everybody building on their lots. He doesn't understand the easement and I know you sign all that stuff. When you get a house, but things get forgotten. People don't tell people. We get a new administration that doesn't police it. It goes on for five, six years. There's built, people building right on top of sewer. It, it, I don't know how to crack that issue. I, I really don't. And it just seems to, every time we do anything like the Stark Sewer, going from the police station to the east, there was issues with buildings and fences and everything else. We never seem to cure this.
Is there really a cure for human behavior?
I believe that, I believe that one of the recommendations that Laura Chamberlain had was just fantastic and that is just like you identify right of way. I, I think that actually having signs that run right along there and all it has to do is just say environmental conservation easement and then have whatever, whatever document you want to refer to, but notifying people just like you do right of way. I mean, you do it all the time and a nice sign that runs through there that can be done, I think it'd be ideal for you guys. And it, we'd have to have the corners in there anyways so that the city would know where the, the city has domain and where the property owner has domain. So some way or another, you got to identify that line that goes through there. And I don't see any problem with small signs that people recognize and they're there. I think it's a great idea and it works everywhere else we do it.
Part of that is also our staff training. So that's something that, you know, we've talked about in the past and then some of that is on the city that we didn't always, um, enforce things. You know, I know, talking with Linda, I mean, there's things that pop up. We've got another easement issue that we've talked about a little bit is we just have to be training our staff too to make sure that we're consistency. Because consistency is my name of the game. I don't know, you guys decide what you want to do, but it has to be consistent and we have to be doing it every time. And the paperwork has to be filed right. The easements have to be on the docking of documents. All that stuff has to be there, so.
Yeah, you definitely need the documentation and the ability to look it up because what's, like Lonnie said, different administration, different people. But if you can have the paper trail for it.
If, if we can get teeth into this document and we can sign appropriately and police appropriately, I'll go with it.
Okay.
I agree, Dwayne.
And I was, I'm in favor of going forward with it. You know anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Clarification. We're talking only about option A, option B, not office court case.
Correct. We're just talking about turnaround thirteen, uh.
The environmental easement, maintenance agreement.
Maintenance agreement.
Yep, and then the outlawing.
And then the outlet.
The outlawing. And as I think Brandon mentioned, some of these things like the sewer easement with, that Dwayne talked about, we can probably look at it. It's just going to be based off of the excavation with required and that sort of thing. And then, and then we are, we do know we're going to be upgrading that probably in the next couple of years here, so.
Hopefully not, but.
Yeah, hopefully not. Outlot E, outlot E, is that gone right now? Okay. Just making sure we're, but didn't you say that was easier to add now, Brandon?
I think we have to leave it up to the developer's side, but for recording easements and doing plating, it seemed like it would be, but.
And if we get this one approved, then if we do it through another process, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be like brand new. We would say that just like we did it over here, we're going to, um, replat, um, outlot E that I'm calling it and it would have all of the same conditions on it and it would get done. And so, yeah, this part has to happen first before we can do that.
So we'll keep that off today.
Okay, I guess we could actually include it in there just so we know it's cleaned up to make it part of the plat.
That little pink section that was down there.
Great, the one that's joining the other properties to the south.
I have no problem with that. My point earlier was if we're going to do one, we need to do.
Yeah, I think that's why I don't want to, right?
Yeah.
It's consistency and it's.
Worry, worry either way, but it, it is going to be another process down the road anyways.
Sure.
So if you get this part of it, if we all come to an agreement and we get this part done, it'll be a lot easier to do the next part. And it would, you know, the developer wants to do it just because cleans up his land ownership and gives him money.
Sure. Okay. Anything else to? No, I think, I appreciate the conversation tonight. You know, other things, well, we can definitely move into the next meeting, so. Okay. Brandon, anything else you got?
No. Give us some good directions from where we're at.
And you're just basically making a motion to table this till the next meeting and we're good?
We're going to table the, do we have to table the whole thing or can we?
No, I don't think so.
First part. I think we can prove this first part and just not, uh. I mean, only out of resolution.
Oh, is it all together in one?
I mean, I think part of, part of it is, what are we going to do with the whole thing?
Okay, so the question first part.
Once you prove part of it, you're kind of kiboshing yourself.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, now we're just down to one. We started with a pretty long list.
All right, good. Thanks, Les.
All right, so onto the number two there, Thompson addition amended final.
Can I get a motion first?
I'll move the, I'll move the table, the perimeter plat on lane fourteen.
I'll make that motion. I was seconding, I'm sorry.
Was I going to second that, Dan? Dan seconded. All favors said aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Lonnie. Um, number two, Thompson addition amended final plat.
Sure. Um, so at the, uh, the last planning commission meeting, um, as the council had recommended, I think, uh, earlier this month, we did, uh, update the, uh, planning commission, um, members of, um, I think it was Mrs. Thompson was there along with, uh, Mr. Judish, who is a potential developer they're going to be working with. Um, we talked at length about it and, uh, the, uh, planning commission, um, felt that, um, you know, the, uh, amended map was clear enough. Uh, I don't know. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
No.
Um, you know, they felt at this time that, um, anything that would change dramatically on that outlot to the south would require a completely new process. And they made the, the developers well, you know, they indicated they were well aware of that. So, um, they did, uh, we, we, you know, we have the items in there that you can see, um, just amending that. And then, um, on, from us, uh, staff level, Linda and I are, you know, that's our, our goal is to make sure all these documents are actually created because right now they haven't been filed yet at the county. So, um, we'll be getting those, you know, documents and advising them, you know, just making sure that that paperwork's done properly. Because we don't want to, it's done. You know, this is what I, I would say, we're, we're done. It's been a whole year, you know, either do it or don't do it. And this is the documents that we're going to be following, so.
Okay. Any questions on that? No, at the recommendation on planning commission, I'll move to approve the resolution, amending the final plat in the Thompson addition.
Thanks, Dwayne. Go to a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Number three, quick trip conditional use permit.
Sure. And this is another item that, um, the planning commission took a look at in, at the last meeting. Um, a number of items in there. I think, uh, quick trip has been very, uh, good to work with and, uh, I think, uh, overall, the, uh, planning commission felt that the, uh, process was pretty thorough. Basically, you know, it's a, a simple demolition of a building and then, uh, they're going to be redoing the parking area, or at least they were going to. I think they still will, even with the, uh, issues we're having right now with the traffic and things. Um, and the full of the time, it's going to be largely truck parking. Um, there are the items that the engineer included as well as the, the county engineer took a look at it. He is continuing to work with them on the permitting process from the state. Um, but at that meeting, the, the planning commission did, uh, recommend approval of their initial use permit for, uh, truck parking.
Any questions on that, anybody?
Pretty straightforward. We're going to obtain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Go to a second.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Number two, media trail connection grant resolution.
Uh, so this is an item that was submitted last year to the state and, uh, it was not, uh, not, uh, approved at that time. So we're looking at resubmitting that with a change, a small change in the, uh, funding, uh, numbers and things like that. I don't know if you have anything you ever had to mention.
No, I mean, we went from twenty-five percent city participation to thirty percent, I believe it was.
And the idea behind that is that it qualifies as a little, I mean, it, we felt like it had a larger chance of, uh, being approved at that funding level because it's, the, the base requirement is twenty-five percent match. You know, we think we'll score better if there's a slightly larger match there, so.
Any questions, anybody? Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the inclusion of planning for the grant again this year. Go second. Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Two, park board approved list of cast aquatic center hires.
So at the park board, uh, it was a recommendation from the park board to bring forward hiring, uh, all these people for, for his lifecards, water safety instructors, concessions and that. With, and the park board did discuss the possibilities of the pool opening late or not opening. They still wanted to move forward with this with the stipulation that if it doesn't open, obviously they won't be hired. But they wanted to move forward with it to hopes, the kids had a, you know, hope and, and we wanted to move on as a city too. So that was.
So it would be a motion to hire these individuals conditional on the opening of the aquatics center. Just on, I'll make that motion.
And I will be abstaining on this.
Go to a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So that's four to zero to one in percentage by the end. Live report, special meeting, we're ready to get out. On the new business, uh, number one, the bond refinancing options.
Okay, well, this is straightforward. Um, you have the opportunity to refinance, given the change in interest rates. However, at this point, we're not sure what they'll be if you should choose to move forward because it's, um, it'll be, you know, depending on what the market is by the time the transaction got done. There's about eight years worth of savings at about seventy-five hundred a year. The fiscal advisor is required to, um, you know, present it as, um, time value of money being reflected with present value. But bottom line, it's about seventy-five hundred dollars a year in, in cash. Uh, the question can always be at a council, at what point wouldn't you consider it if the saving were only three thousand a year for eight years, would you consider it? Or, you know, is five thousand, given the interest rates right now, if, nothing's going to drop that low, but that's what you consider when you look at this. Is it worth even going through it? So the savings is even in light of paying for, um, those bond issuance costs. So do you like to move forward with this? We could. The ideal date would have been April eighth, but we're not sure that would have been, it could have been done by then and now you're not even meeting. So by April twenty-second, um, uh, it could be done because you would need to approve the final documentation and whatever the interest rates reflect and whatnot. So, uh, the, the request tonight is just to find out whether or not you'd like us to move forward with this.
So when would we lock on a rate and know?
It would be closer to the, you know, the twenty-second date.
Okay.
And we could certainly find out what it's looking like, but you'd have the final approval on it.
Okay. Well, yeah, because even if you look at the fee schedule for what they're charging, saving, we save three thousand dollars a year for eight years, it's still twenty-five thousand dollars after the, still a net fee.
After, yeah.
So I would say move forward, approve it at the twenty-second meeting because if any savings above the fee is going to be.
Sure. That's right. That's right. But again, for your consideration.
Yeah, with the conditions in the credit markets right now, it might be different.
Get those negative interest rates to be in good shape.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like that.
So, um, but I'd like to request that motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to move forward with the bond refinancing to approve at the next meeting. A second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Number two, cable franchise agreement.
Sure. And this is informational. Uh, Nancy made me aware that the cable franchise agreement we have is due to expire this year. So I have contacted, uh, KM Telecom and let them know that, uh, we're looking at negotiating a, potentially a new agreement with them. So just wanted you to have that in your hands. If you have any questions about it. I know, I think, maybe one or two. I know, I think maybe one or two of you were on the council on this, was, I think there was a mayor who signed it, who's sitting over here at Blaine. But.
Yeah, it feels like you're the one doing it.
But so throughout this year, we'll be just reviewing that with them, and we'll bring that back at a future meeting if we have some terms that we've been able to come to an agreement on.
So can I just ask, why do we have a franchise agreement?
I believe it's the right-of-way, because they utilize our right-of-way, so it's in lieu of, it's in lieu of that payment they'd have to make.
Right, okay, so it's a right-of-way agreement, basically?
In essence, with the cash payment, in essence, yeah.
Number three, FFA property agreement update.
Well, including your bag, this is another one, I don't know, we get to have fun with this one. So based on my understanding of this, we have property that sometime in the past, some council made an agreement, potentially, we don't have any documentation at all, from what I've been told, that the FFA could utilize that property, and then they would keep any generated profits from that. So, you know, that's what you'd understand as Nancy?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my understanding, so, you know, seeing that, you know what, I think it's about thirty acres, that seems like it's probably not a, a very consistent situation to maintain. The council has a couple of things to consider, if they want to continually allowing that, which is their prerogative, you can think about it. No actions needed tonight. If we want to continue allowing that for the time being, I think we do want to have an agreement in place that lays out the responsibilities and the, that sort of thing. And also, if, if, you know, we determine that, you know, we're not looking for, to continue that agreement, then also, we have to do that. What you've gotten in the package there is just what Teresa had looked at about four years ago, and from what I can tell, that there's a limited amount of progress was made on that previously. So just wanted to bring that to your awareness, that it's something that I'm gonna try and get dealt with this year to the best of my ability, and I'm gonna need your feedback on how we'd like to proceed there.
This is the remnant of land behind the shop?
Yes.
There's property between the shop and the sewer plant, and then the backside of the sewer plant, so.
Okay. So we can discuss that in our next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to get it in your hands, and so that you are aware of it, because I know, you know, like I said, it's all about documenting and making sure we have everything.
Before the FFA had it, it was rented out.
To someone else.
To someone else.
Yeah, right now, currently, the city receives no revenue from this property, so you're aware.
Yeah, and so, are they gonna want, I mean, do we intend, the intention is to still let them plan on it this year? Because they may wanna know before April.
Sure, no, I'm not looking at any changes per se this year, it's, it's too late to do that, but I think going forward.
Just to formalize something.
Well, yeah, formalize, it's up to you, formalize whatever we need to formalize, just so, whether we rent it out or we continue to maintain this agreement so that it's documented and signed, and everyone's cognizant of it.
Got it. Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, number four was one of the added items, the first meeting in April. We discussed a little bit during our work session before, that we are going to cancel our first meeting in April, which was to take place on April tenth, and just hold our last meeting of the month on April twenty-second. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve that resolution to cancel the first meeting in April. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number five, also added from our work session on emergency declaration, actions and policies, was that first document in the work session. I guess the document that we have to just say we're gonna approve the whole thing, I guess we can't really approve the whole thing, because number eight, we're gonna talk about the possibility of prorating rebating liquor license fees, so that's discussion for later.
Well, I mean, if you'd like to exempt that from number eight and leave that separate, we'll cer, I mean, I have that from your feedback, that we could certainly leave that separately out, outside of the other, I mean, part of that is just, you know, if there are documents that need to be signed, or payments, as Nancy mentioned, that we need to make, it just sort of clarifies that.
Right.
We could sort of leave that out.
I think we leave number eight out, that we're looking at doing something, but we don't know what yet, so we don't know when to approve that.
It's up to you.
That's my opinion, everybody, any agreement there? Okay, so the document, so just so we get it, so the city.
Strike number eight.
Strike number eight, and then just to clarify, the first two, I think, are what people watching at home or listening, I guess are the most interesting, that city's gonna suspend all water shut-offs and penalties for the late payment until the termination of declaration, termination of the declaration of emergency. And number two, the city waives late fees for delinquent utility payments during the declaration of emergency. So people don't have to worry about their utilities being shut off.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure, but, so the resolution here is this item here that says resolution? The item that you're looking at is part of that, so what would happen is if you approved this document, this resolution, it would allow us to put that document into effect in that nature. So this would be the authorizing document, that would be the policy followed to this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sorry about that miscommunication, but.
Okay, I got it, I'm good with that.
So we would revise that for number eight and number six, that was a, I'm just typing too, if we're leaving that on.
Okay. Then we're good?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bonnie, out of delay here. Administrator's report.
Okay, so there's a number of items in there, and I tried to, I'll try to keep it short, because we're already, we're almost on eight o'clock here, so. Just so you know, basically, the league conference is still scheduled, so if you would like to go to the LMC Annual Conference in Think Paul, just let us know, we can get you signed up there. You know about all the rescheduling of all those events. Electric service territory agreement was included in your packet, we are making a lot of progress with itself. So, you know, we're pleased about that, I'll be reviewing with our, our service territory attorney on Friday, but I think we have got some, you know, we've got, the nice thing is it includes the interim power, which is good if that, well, the construction begins, it won't require a lot of messing up there. Then I have a couple of other items, and some of them are outdated already. For example, street sweeping, I think we were gonna start, and now we'll see how that goes next week. But just so you're aware of street sweeping, I know sometimes you get questions from residents, when are they coming to the streets? Well, next week would be our goal, is to really hit that hard, it's possible that'll happen, it's possible it's not. We did have a large issue with a water leak last week on kind of the northwest side of town that hadn't rectified. They pretty much spent the whole day, they had to take out a large section, it was kind of kept giving away as they went through. But we have fixed that now. Seventh Street, there's some complaints, that area was cut in two because of a water leak as well. If you drive down there, we are watching that, we are looking at repaving that section that's been cut out. We had some residents' comments on it, Charlie's watching it very closely, make sure the gravel gets filled back in as it sort of subsides. So if you have any questions on that. See here, I know Nancy had commented that we're planning on having a work session starting on five fifteen, but that's gonna be probably punted, so we'll reschedule that.
Yeah.
Sure, so we did, you know, preliminary audit work, field work was done, and not, usually, I guess Nancy doesn't update it to us before the audits are done, so we'll be, we'll be rescheduling that. I think those are the big items I have, including whatever else is in the packet, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Onto.
Engineers' report.
INI reduction plan update. Yeah, so last minute, you guys asked me to provide a quick update, so I wanted to take any comments, I guess I ever answered any questions, obviously. So I think the idea was, is to get a broad picture, we have a lot of action items that we were partaking in on our INI reduction strategies and work, so let's go through them. The pump and lateral inspection program, we're already kicking it off at a big meeting plan, and we have to see canceled, and that, that project's on hold, so we're just gonna continue holding until this kind of clears away, and then we get the green lines to get going again. Any questions on that? All righty, the other one, the flood study that was brought up by Councilman Lonnie a few meetings ago. We got a draft of some actionable items on there, some different funding mechanisms that we could look at pursuing. All of them have advantages, disadvantages, we're taking some time to kind of really put those out there to, to really get some discussion points, I'll probably sit down with the administrator, potentially Lonnie and Pollard Works, and kind of looking at what, what we may bring forward to the council, so we are working on that. That is for the flood control, the more of the mitigating of the flood events we've had. The other items were part of the INI reduction program, we're a bypass pumping plan, that is when we do experience heavy flows. If we are going to be backing up properties, do we start pumping in a different manner, do we start pumping in different locations? I sat down last week with Pollard Works and administration, went through a draft plan, we're revising that, gonna be finalizing that here in the coming weeks. And our, our field staff's been working with city field staff, potentially doing a potential rollout of that project, or excuse me, that work that would incur when we have larger rain events to kind of do a dry run, if you will. So we're looking at doing that. The other one is the backflow preventer program, we haven't really done anything with that, so that discussion was, do we wanna have a backflow preventer program where the city goes out and installs backflow preventers on the sanitary sewer system through a city project, so something we probably need to bring back to the council on. I'm rolling that out as springtime is coming here, construction season is coming. The other item was public education, we incorporate a lot of public education, our some pump, lateral inspection program website. Hopefully, the council at some point can get, get online and look at that public education documents. We'd probably take those after our first public meeting, incorporate that into some city documents, city Facebook posting, city website, et cetera. But our thought there is it kind of started there, because we're gonna have everybody together, we're gonna tell them all these things, we can continue educating them as we move forward. So that's the public education action that you guys asked us to do. The last couple are manhole inspections, I don't know if you've seen her, field staff has been out looking in the old manhole, seeing which ones are leaking, which ones are in poor shapes, we can ultimately bring that into our cap improvement planning. We are participating in that currently. The other item was CCTV review and coordination, last council meeting, you approved the treatment contract to complete that work, that's off and running, and getting that done here over the next, the six to nine months, so. That's the, well, the last one was the feasibility report for the trunk line, which is essentially from, or masting creek. Goes underneath the railroad trussel out to the treatment plant, through the developed area that we talked about tonight with the Blaines Development, oh, the treatment plant. We're waiting to do our manhole inspection, our CCTV review before we look at that, modeling of that sewer line. We ultimately are gonna be looking at, does that line add capacity, is it overcapacity? How does INI reduction plan of that, we obviously reduce our INI, that trunk line would likely have capacity, so it's kind of a chicken or the egg, or if we can seal our system off, then the pipe's probably big enough, if we can't seal it, it's just don't, might may not be big enough, so, just to get our arms around the level of magnitude there, that was the intent of that actual item, so. That's where we're at, the big picture of the action items that we've been given. We're obviously happy to take any comments, any kind of redactions or thoughts or comments, so.
No, perfect, that's what I was looking for, was just, these are the action items, here's the action we've taken so far, and what's next, so.
I'm happy to provide maybe a write-up, maybe quarterly or something on this as we move forward, too, just so you can, can keep your guys' thumbs on it, report back to citizens if they get you questions, do you two, I have to do that, so.
Appreciate it.
That would be nice.
Awesome, thanks, Brandon. Personnel, number one, police chief retirement.
I just wanted to let you know that our police chief has given me notice that he is anticipating retirement in, you know, in the next three months, which I appreciate that. So what I'd like to do is, you know, I talked to Dwayne a little bit before the meeting, is I think we'll have some personnel committee meetings to set up the framework of how, you know, you'd all like to take a look at filling that position, you know, if we'd like to do internal hires, or if we wanna open that position up. It is a, our next police chief will not be, will not be a union member, so it certainly is, it's not covered by that contract anymore, so it certainly would be allowed to have an open hire. You know, and I'm open to feedback from everyone, of course. I guess that'd be my preference, would be that the personnel committee would typically be the ones that would set the tone there, and they would bring a recommendation if they desired to, to the council. However, I'm open to any process, if you'd like to do open interviews in front of the council, or however you'd like to do it. I'm just letting you know right now that we're expecting that process to start here in the next four weeks, hopefully, anyhow, things go. I always, I try to preface everything with that now, because who knows? But that's, did anybody have any questions on that, I guess? Okay, I did have one other item, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, that I forget, I neglected to mention during my report. And it's a big one, and I think you're, you're aware of it, so the EDA is creating a program and working with Nicholas to create a framework for a special, basically, business interruption loan, which would be, local businesses would be able to help tap. And our expectation is it'd be part of a, sort of a packet of loans. You know, so the state SBA is gonna have their own set of programs, we're gonna encourage people to apply for that, because they obviously have more funding than we do, they have a larger ability to do that. Smith has, has got a program they're gonna be coming out with, and then we'd also like to have our own EDA. So, you know, it'll be, you know, trying to integrate those all, so that people get the kind of help they need. One of the things that I was planning on doing this fall was bringing in the possibility of doing a transfer from the electric fund to the EDA, because we do have some additional rebated money that's gonna be coming in from, from companies. And what that would mean is that in, in this fall's budget process, instead of levying, you know, say twenty thousand dollars for the revolving loan fund, we basically would be taking that money and putting it in our revolving loan fund now, which in the fall, we go through our levy, would allow us to reduce the levy to the EDA, you know, and so I, to me, it makes sense to have that fund available now when it's really needed, as opposed to, you know, twenty thousand dollars, unfortunately, is, that's maybe five, you know, possibly five small loans we'd have with a business, whereas if we took, so what I'm asking for is, is just the knowledge, acknowledgement that we, I'd be looking at moving about sixty thousand dollars into that fund, that would be coming out of that rebated money that we received. So it's not money that we were planning on having, it's money that's extra on top of what was budgeted. And Nancy's got some other good purposes for some of the other rebated money, I know that. We're gonna clear out some of that, that fund balance, right, Nancy?
Hopefully, yeah.
That's right, so we're, we're working on that, too, but I, I just think, right now, we need to do all we can to help our businesses in town, and I, and it's something I was gonna be asking for anyways, I'm just looking to move that on, so.
And we've talked several times, but I, I agree a hundred percent, and the, the process would be that if we could get money into these businesses' hands sooner than the state.
True.
And definitely sooner than the federal, like.
Yes.
Six months quicker, especially for the, the service people that are shut down.
I mean, for some of the smallest businesses, you know, two thousand dollars to keep the lights on, that's, that's what they really need right away, you know, honestly.
And so zero percent.
Right.
Payments start, the deferred payment, so it's a, basically.
Yeah, I think our terms would be very agreeable, yeah.
It's a start, a step in the right direction for a fund that would then be available for unanticipated things in the future that we wouldn't have to transfer.
Well, I mean, in the full of the time, you know, all that money, these are loans.
I'll come back.
So this, that money will come back to the city as part of our revolving loan fund. You know, it may take, you know, a couple of years for that to happen, but we're not actually gonna lose anything, it's just a matter of maybe speeding that up a little bit.
Any other questions on that at all?
No, I've been working with Nicholas on it a little, so.
I would make that motion to transfer the sixty thousand from the electric, the refunds to the revolving loan fund.
True.
Look for a second. Smell, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks very much, I appreciate that.
Lonnie, you're on about a two-second delay, it's like you're calling from the moon.
We're about out of power.
Yeah, we're gonna be done.
Okay, we're just about done then, so we got the notification of the police chief, and I'd like to thank him for his service, and I'm sure we'll be talking to him before he goes, but it's kind of an advance notice from him, appreciate it for three months. And then number two, resignation of Craig Helgason, his letter was in there, so it's unfortunate to lose Craig, but sometimes circumstances dictate that you just have to do what you have to do, so. Thank Craig for his service, and wish him the best in the future.
Do you need a motion?
We have to have a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, and that's it.
Okay, take that. And a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And nothing under the attorney tonight?
Correct.
Okay, and we have correspondence, if you have any questions on the correspondence, see the administrator, anything else to add on the correspondence that you received? And thank you all for coming tonight, and I'll look for a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Dwayne, do you have a second? I'll second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries.
We were waiting for Lonnie to second.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Bonnie, have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.